Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the Tacoma Park, special meeting of the City of Tacoma Park, City Council to order. Clerk, are we calling the roll for this?
We typically don't. I can be happy to do it if you like.
I think we have everyone. All right, awesome. We'll get started. So the goal of tonight's special meeting is to do a retreat with the council members so that we can have discussion around city priorities. Every year, the city council reviews a set of... So the goal for tonight's meeting is for us to do a few things. One, to do a walkthrough of the 2020, 2021, 2022 council priorities, with an eye for any modifications or updates or eliminations we want to make to those priorities. Two, to hear from our staff around some of the priorities as they see it, but also to take a look at some of the recommendations from our organizational assessments around positions and priorities there. And then lastly, for us to have some time to talk about any new priorities that we have as a council, and any thoughts that people may have around gaps, areas we need to focus on, and also any thoughts that we would like for our staff who are developing our budget to keep in mind as they're fleshing out the budget. The deputy city managers are working frantically to get easels set up in the room. And the goal of those, those large sheets of paper is to provide us with opportunities that as ideas may come to you or things that may be useful to flesh out later, maybe we're not in a place right now to decide, but is an idea that you may have that we may need to flesh out more. You can, at any time, get up and write some of those ideas up on the papers that are spread out in the back. Again, the goal is, for today, is to start the conversation. The next steps for us would be to, over the next week or two, to finalize our priorities, with an eye for being able to more clearly communicate that to staff, but also make it available for the public. Typically, what we do is release a statement communicating the priorities that the council has. So before we jump in, are there any just general questions around the goal for the meeting today? Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, I guess I have reviewed what the priorities, the goals, and strategies were before, and was wondering about some, I guess you'd call, metrics? Some measures of success, what it looks like, to increase the accountability of us, as well as the staff, to our residents. So to do that in one or two weeks, to come up with those metrics, seems daunting. So I'm wondering if we can expect to have the priorities, goals, and key strategies established in the timeframe that you suggested, but after that, or, you know, giving ourselves a little bit more time to work on metrics, baselines, some key data that would help us provide accountability to the citizens?
So thank you so much, Councilmember Gibson, for that question. I think what's important for us to keep in mind is this, the priorities, the goals, the strategies, and the outcomes that we're hoping are designed to be more general in nature. The metrics themselves should be developed as the staff are developing the work that's tied to those strategies. So one of the things that will be important is as we are having conversations around our budget, what happens with a number of our departments is they provide metrics as part of the budget. And if there are priorities that we have communicated and goals, and we see some of, that there's a lack of specific metrics tied to those goals as part of the budget, then that would be the proper place to bring that up. For example, the, a lot of our ARPA programs have metrics and things that are on our dashboard. If this council determines that, yes, it is an important priority for us to make sure that we're achieving the goals of the Direct Cash Assistance Program, for example, then as they're submitting that budget, we want to take a look at those metrics to see whether or not they're sufficient, and offer any suggestions in terms of modifications there. But if there are goals that are specifically tied to, say, or metrics that are specifically tied to, say, council activities, so to what extent are the outcomes that have been communicated in our priorities, have they been achieved, right? And the council will need to develop metrics for that. We can definitely have future work sessions to identify priority programs or priority activities that could help us with quantifying that. It would be a little tricky, but I do think that, you know, for us, again, because the goal of this exercise is to really set the stage for staff to then take the goals that we have, the strategies that we would like to employ, as well as the general outcomes that we're hoping to achieve, and to turn that into specific projects that would then have measurable outcomes and measurable metrics. I think that may be one way for us to make sure that we're hitting those targets without necessarily having to flesh out a bunch of metrics based on programs that, in some cases, may not have been fully fleshed out yet.
Yeah, I guess I hope that it can be iterative, and if we do have ideas. In terms of potential metrics, I understand what you're saying, that the staff has the primary responsibility for that. Some of us, we may have, in the process, have some things, some suggestions to make. I'm not suggesting a finalized log frame. I'm just talking about, yeah, here are some suggested metrics that we look at, some inputs or some outputs. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Just so that everyone is aware, I don't have my handy dandy screen tonight, so I will have to turn my head a little bit just to see who has on their mic. Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had some overall, I don't know, protocol questions for the evening about the presentation and timing of potential breaks. Because I don't necessarily like to be off rhythm with people, but I am going to need to take some, so I figured maybe I ask and then see if I can align with where we're going. Is that possible?
Sure, that is possible. While I am looking at the time, it is 6:40. Can we agree to take a break at 8 o'clock? All right, so let's get started with the first item, which is walking through the council's prior priorities from 2021 to 2022. So you all should have, it's been printed out, but it was also provided as part of our binders, the adopted resolution 2021-6, which communicates the council priorities. And then there's also a more in-depth breakdown of those priorities by goal, strategies, as well as the desired outcome. And so because a lot of us are new, I do want to walk through each of the priorities just to give you a feel for what the council was considering at the time. And then we can kind of do a one-by-one discussion around whether or not we need to modify, is it still relevant, and what additions you all would like to add. So the council established, and I believe this began, I guess, before we, I think it was the first time when we got on council back in 2017, or maybe right before 2017. Terry, do you remember when that thing was before?
But I'm, I'm turning to City Perk for advice on that.
I should have looked it up. I apologize. Around 2017 was when we began establishing. I feel like it started with Mayor, Mayor Stewart was really working on that while she was on council. But the idea really was for the council to agree on a set of guiding principles around priorities that could kind of help staff with managing their work as well. And what we found was that there were a number of staff that actually appreciated the council walking through what some of its priorities were, because it helped them to better target their work. So the 2021, 2022 city council priorities consisted of six priorities. Now, it was the 2021, 2022, because of the pandemic, and we recognized that we really just kind of needed to do a bit of an update, and not so much a major overhaul. So the first priority was mitigate the impact of COVID-19 on the community and city operations, with the idea being we had to, at the time, deal with the closure of a number of our public-facing activities. We were trying to phase those back in, dealing with employee policies around COVID, also address the immediate needs that residents had as a result of the pandemic, so emergency assistance, rental assistance, food insecurity, and also supporting our small businesses. So it was really, how do we make sure that we're keeping the city functioning in this unprecedented time? And that one was new, because it was a result of the pandemic. A livable community for all. Now, that is one that we've had for some time. And the goal of that particular priority was really to make sure that the, we're creating an environment where people in our community can thrive. And so there were a number of goals really focused on making sure that the people who live in our community have safe, quality housing, are able to eat, are able to have the employment that they need, really focused on the residents themselves, and making sure that we're providing that environment for people in our community to enjoy living here, but thrive as a result. And so you will see that the 2021, 2022 priorities included things like affordable housing, addressing aspects of food insecurity, really looking at programming for youth, seniors, and residents who face barriers. So a lot of our recreation-related activities, defending our status as a sanctuary city, and making sure that we're prioritizing, and our staff are prioritizing, those efforts. But there were also things that related to race equity, which is under that bucket, as well as transportation and providing connectivity for residents. And then we had a fiscally sustainable government, and that's item number three. And that was really, that priority has been in existence for some time, and it's really so that we can always prioritize being a fiscally sustainable government, responsible government. For a number of years, it was about dealing with tax duplication, it probably still is. But tax duplication is something we wanted to make sure. And tax duplication, for those who are not familiar, is making sure that municipalities receive their fair share of county tax services, county tax funds for services that are provided by the city, not the county, right? So we get reimbursed for a number of those services, and making sure that we're getting our fair share of reimbursement for the services that we provide as a city. So there was a lot of advocacy regarding tax duplication, making sure, and I know for 2021, 2022, a big thing was our tax assessment, and the fact that we are a municipality that got assessed all at once. And we wanted to make sure that that was being done in a fair and equitable way. Another big piece was around our budget process. How can we improve upon our budget process, communicate with residents? Our banking policies was also another thing, like sustainable investment. So last year, we did have a task force that was really helping us with thinking through our sustainable banking practices. And then also our reserve policy. The prior council had identified thresholds for where we wanted our reserves to be, and that was a priority that we had established in 2021, 2022. Priority four, environmentally sustainable community. That is more about how are we making sure that we are addressing the impacts of climate change through mitigation, through resilience, and also as we are managing our resources. And so what are some of the activities that we want to prioritize that fall in that bucket? Item number five, engaged, responsive, service-oriented government. That was developed really so that we could just be the best government entity that we could be. One of the big things was hiring and onboarding a new city manager, improving city communications with residents, making sure that we're improving policies and processes to enhance resident interaction with the city government, and requests for service, things like requests for services, complaint systems, code enforcement. How can we make some of these processes work better so that we're able to provide better service to our residents in the community? Also, another big thing was improving and reviewing the overall structure and purpose of our council-appointed committees. That was something that we had identified as a priority. We had a number of different committees, and we wanted to make sure that we were, one, making sure that the goals and the charges of our committees were clear and necessary and meet the needs of the city, and the city council in particular. And two, that we were creating an environment that supported all residents participating in our committees. So you'll hear during the next council meeting some of the things that we've done to try to help to further equity in terms of our council participation. Another big thing is improved service delivery and reduce administrative burden by updating internal processes, IT infrastructure, and software. So that was a goal for the prior council. We recognize things like our websites need to be updated, our financial systems need to be updated, and so that was a priority that we had. And then the last, community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. And this one was more designed to be about economic development, but more from a perspective of community development. So how can we have projects like redevelopment of the Tacoma Park Rec Center? How can we plan and prepare for development in the city and maintain the character and the economic and racial diversity of our community? Those were some of the priorities that we had established. So that's just a general overview of our priorities from 2021 to 2022. We'll do a more in-depth dive on those priorities in a minute, but I just wanted to make sure that there were no general questions about these priorities before I turn things over to our city manager, who can kind of walk through the staff priorities. Councilmember DeBaal?
Just point of order, so when would you like feedback on the overall priorities, the big six, as opposed to the goals and strategies? Or are we doing that all together after the presentation?
We can do that all together after the staff are presented. All right, excellent. So with that, I will turn things over to City Manager Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council. In your packet, in your packet, you have the senior leadership team prioritization meeting. One of the first items that I did when I came on board as your city manager is work with the departments.
When you say packet, do you mean like a recent email, or do you mean this thing?
It's in both.
Okay, my bad. All right, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yes, either in your book or online. But when I became your city manager, one of the first things that I did is work with the department heads to come together to be able to understand what was the organizational priorities. It was known in each of the departments, in each of the silos, but not from a citywide organizational way. And I facilitated the meeting with the, as a workshop, and one of the things that we did was look at it from a self-care and mental health. And that's been my theme since I've been your city manager with the senior leadership team. And so we started out with a discussion on self-care, and then we went into the different priorities. And I asked each of the departments to really think about their priorities to no more than three to five operational priorities per department. And going through that workshop, there was a lot of great ideas that came up in each of the departments. You see a lot of the raw data. There was five themes that came up out of each of the departments: employee development, engagement, which included internal, external, as well as IT, digital information, process improvement, and the fifth was capital. And when we got to understanding the themes, we took a step back and looked at, okay, what can we do in 2022? What can we do in 2023? Well, that's before the market and the world changed, at that point in 21, fall. But I do recognize, and I will acknowledge, there's a lot of things that we rated, whether, you see a lot of high. Those are significant priorities with each of the departments, that they believe those are things that we necessarily needed to get done at that point in time. The last page of our priorities, so we took all those priorities, and we ranked them, those 2022, 2023 citywide, and then those items that we believe are beyond as an organization. And you see that on page three of each of the years, which a lot of these priorities we've been working on, they're tied with council priorities, and priorities that departments have had for a long time now. And a lot of these items are ongoing, have either started, underway, or still under conversation ongoing throughout the organization. And this was the, really, the first step is understanding where we are, building our foundation as an understanding. The second step was when I went to council and asked for a consultant to come in, do the organizational assessment. So that was step two of this phase. And you have in your packets or in your books, as well as online, materials on the matrix. Alan from Matrix, who presented the council. And from there, Matrix came in, assessed the organization, did a lot of the surveying, talked to council, and every member of the organization to get a better understanding on where things were. They actually came back in. Phase four was a SWAC analysis with the senior leadership team, and that's included in your packet as well. Step four is more engagement with the organization, and they provided what's core and not core to the organization, and that's in your materials as well. And the greater document shows some considerations for council and the organization to think about in years to come. And the last phase for us is we're getting ready to go into, in May, a senior leadership team retreat. And where we're going to be looking at it from a trauma-informed care leadership retreat to really dive into how do we transform the workplace culture and improve employee satisfaction and engagement while looking at reducing high-stress burnout and turnover in the organization, and trauma, and, and May is Mental Health Month awareness as well. So it's a good month for us to dive into that a little bit more. With that, if there's any questions that you have, and we do have departments, department heads online as well to answer any questions if you need to.
Councilmember Small?
Thanks, Mayor. I just had a question for you, Jamal, about the materials with regard to the list assessment and the prioritization. Because it's broken out in 2022 and 2023, could you speak generally to where you feel you are or were in 2022?
As it relates to page three, the last...
Yeah, whatever the compiled list is, divided into 2022 priorities and 2023 priorities. So if you're ready for some more, like, part of the round concept.
Most of, particularly the items that you see in 2022, a lot of those are still ongoing, underway. Like you take the financial forecast, we actually are underway with that right now. And a presentation in council will be forthcoming from our consultant within the next month or two. The HRIS system is going to be fully launched from HR in April, with the first pay period in April. The financial upgrade to the finance system is going to be fall of this year, going into spring '24. The organizational assessment is already done. And the disaster recovery, I believe we finished that in IT, that project. So most of the items are underway, started. Some of the other items are still ongoing, like the content management. You'll see that on the budget amendment number five on Wednesday night. We're going to request to move that out of '23 into '24. There's still some, and that's through ARPA, and that's more work we need to do in looking at obtaining the right vendor to help us with content management.
Data and storage and distribution, or website?
Content management, data storage internally. Particularly when you look at PIA requests and things of that sort, there has to be a way that we have to...
Kill all the staff or ask people in the normal course of business? Okay, I get it.
Councilmember Filcher?
I was just wondering, so this says it was done in 2021. For one, how long did it take for you guys to come up with this list? Like, is this a long process?
We actually did it in three hours. We were very efficient.
And then you just mentioned that you're getting ready to have a different type of prioritization meeting. How often are you intending to have a prioritization meeting similar to this one?
We'll be looking at another prioritization meeting sometime in the future. The first step is go through, because right now with burnout throughout the organization and employee satisfaction, we want to talk about that and get everybody in the level set, and then talk about how do we bring in whatever new priorities council has, and align that with where the organization is. So it'll probably be in the fall. We'll have another conversation on that. But there's a couple more phases that we'll talk about in the retreat.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yeah, is there a specific crosswalk between the priorities that your team put together and the council?
I would say what, the items that the mayor went over, there is synergy in a lot of the items. And particularly, you look at a lot of the IT, internal facing, some of the mental health initiatives that's tied in here. So there is a lot of synergy with not only the priorities, but also the ARPA priorities that council had as well.
I would, I guess, maybe as going forward this year, I'd like for a more explicit crosswalk between what we come up with priorities and what theirs, and so that we're working together and that it's clear where we're not on the same page or not. So I'm not suggesting you undo what you've done, good work, but maybe going forward to clearly crosswalk that.
Hey, Randy, can I have a second of your time on that? I wanted to echo something to you.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that, wow, that I totally agree with that because it seems natural. But I also am aware of, and just wanted to acknowledge the tension between being too specific about things that the council has said that would go beyond, that dictates to the city manager because of the way that the government is set up. And so doing that is a good thing and a reasonable thing. But I do appreciate the fact that the city staff has its own lane for how it's going to drive that down to staff. That's, I just wanted to make sure that we had, like, acknowledged that to some degree. But I agree with you, so.
Yes, yes, obviously, they have their own lane. And we work together and it's a partnership. So all I'm talking about doing is making it explicit how those, we're working in the same direction.
And.
Agreed.
Yeah. And to Councilmember Gibson's point, I think when we start walking through the strategies that the council explicitly communicated when it established its priorities, then some of that parallelism will become really clear. So like, for example, one of the, as part of the fiscal sustainable government, part of what we had, part of what we had requested was to consider in a regular budget cycle in future years, innovative budget processes to identify ways to present summary as well as budget information. And so you will likely see, like, finance budget online scrotta, right? So we kind of said, hey, this is our goal, and here are some ways in which we may want to see it. And then they then take that to say, all right, now we need to figure out how to do it. But I agree with you, like, kind of having, making it really clear, like, this is a fiscal, this meets goal six, this meets goal two, this meets goal three. It would be very helpful.
I didn't want it to seem at all like I don't agree with you, Randy. I completely agree with you. I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know, being respectful of the nature of the process.
Yeah. And it's helpful, so as we start talking about the specific, the nuance, because I just provide a very top-level overview of the priorities. But as we start to do that deeper dive into the specific goals that were communicated for each and the specific strategies that prior council had kind of outlined, and again, keep in mind, we're not going to be able to figure all of this out in one night. Don't expect that at all. But it will help us to kind of have some conversations around different strategies and goals and priorities that we want to see as this council. Councilmember Dabala.
Yeah, thank you. So this is, this is helpful. So a lot of these are in process. And one of them is mental health initiative for staff. And guess what you're doing at the May retreat? So that's good, right? And I think I heard you say that you plan to revisit these in the fall to see what's done and what's not done and what needs to be added and taken off based on the two years that have intervened.
We will review it, but part of it is, it'll be a conversation once we go into the retreat as well.
Okay, so it may also be part of the retreat in May. Good to know. And then the first one, which is both a council and a staff leadership priority, finding new ways to engage residents that don't currently participate. So I don't want to lose that one. I know we, there's been a lot of work on financial management and HR systems and so on, and that's, and I, but I just want to flag that. And we will presumably talk about that one when we get to, to number five in the council priorities. And I appreciate that it's on there, that staff see it as a priority as well. That's it. I had other questions, but they were already asked.
Thank you so much for walking through this. And some of my questions have already been asked. In terms of the 2023 citywide priorities, and it makes sense for there to be an update to that, particularly once this council has kind of communicated what our goals are. But there were a few items that are kind of on this list that would require council engagement in a more substantial way. So would it be possible, as senior staff are having those conversations around priorities, that we're thinking about it not just from the perspective of what the council priorities are, but what would the council role be in terms of implementing? So like, a review and adjust the citywide structure, that would be something that the council would need to be heavily involved in, kind of, if we're talking about revamping the org structure for the city, which aligns with what you've communicated in terms of what our contractors have said, in terms of the org assessment and things like that. That means that those are the kinds of activities that ultimately need to come before council. And we would need to have an iterative role in determining what the appropriate adjustments should be. And so that, I think, is going to be, you know, also depending on the citywide policies, reviewing and updating, depending on what they are, may be something that the council would have to play a substantial role in adjusting. True.
Madam Mayor, you're absolutely correct. And one of the things, if you flip over your sheet to page four, when we talk about next steps and communication challenges and needs, it's called out there because it's, you know, council has a role in a lot to be able, when we talk about policies, when we're talking about changing structures across the city, there's still items that we need to think through. And so I just wanted to call your attention to that, and it's something we discuss.
There's nothing on the back?
It's in the, sorry.
It's in the, okay.
Very last.
The very last.
If I could just point out, as not to be confusing, so I had prepared a packet for tonight of materials that we had also posted on the website. So you should have everything in that little packet, except for the big, the matrix organizational assessment, which of course you already have. Now, the second packet is for Wednesday night, just so you're not confused by all the paper in front of you. I'm sorry.
No worries. No, I think the city manager, I just want to make sure that I am looking at the right piece of paper. So the senior leadership team prioritization meeting, and then on the back there are some next steps.
It's not on the one of the books, right?
Why, I don't know. But I got it now.
So it's obvious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are there any other, oh, Councilmember Gibson.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't hear.
Any other questions for the city manager regarding priorities? Oh, Councilmember Seaman, so sorry.
Thank you. That's okay.
Just real quick, I just wondered if there's any backup material for this that goes a little bit deeper in explaining what some of these are, because some of them are, I guess, you know, the reader can assume what these mean and feel good about them or bad. But it would be helpful to know what was really being, what you were really thinking about. Give you an example, it says neighborhood liaison. And that means something to me, and I think it's a great idea, but maybe it's, I'm not thinking the same thing you're thinking of.
Thank you, Councilman. And there's no materials that we actually have, because it was a free-flowing workshop, and we were throwing ideas together, and then we were ranking everything and voting to get to this list that we have for that. If there are certain items that council would like more information, we can try to provide from that meeting. But that neighborhood piece is really tied to the ARPA piece, where was the community connectors, and that's where that conversation came from.
Okay, thank you. I, yeah, like I said, some of it's pretty obvious what it means, like the websites. But thank you for that.
Councilmember Small.
I just wanted to, I think, echo to some degree what Terry was saying and what I think Randy has sort of been getting at, too, in that there presumably are, like, particularly if there's a SWAC in here, or a SWAC, or however we call it, that there've got to be positives associated with the change, or policy change, or implementations of any given kind. And then you've got to have some, theoretically at least, some weaknesses or things that you didn't get to, or whatever else. And I don't know, I don't, I'm not trying to challenge you to do this thing or whatever, but it may be a good idea in the go-forward, particularly as we move towards the specificity of the budget season, if we did end up with some sort of a document of some kind, which may fall in a triangle down to the next appropriate level, but some sort of aggregation of where you see things as lined up with what you have demonstrated as concern. Like, I know we're not voting, and I'm not intending to throw a motion on you in the next time we see you or anything, but it is something we may want to consider in the go-forward as far as we're going towards help like that. I think also, I sort of hear Randy talking about the prospect of officially becoming an outcomes-based organization, and what that sort of means with regard to projects and whatever else, so you can actually track yourself on where you aspire to. And so as you guys are considering formal policies in the go-forward on this, there may be a couple of places to consider as entry points for this increased communication and whatever else, particularly since we're going to get a new website anyway, so it'd be like a synergy. I'm done.
Councilmember Fulter.
I consider the council priorities to be very broad. And, you know, when I look at what the priorities are that staff came up with, I don't have any problems seeing how these fit into the council's priorities. But I'm just wondering if there were any places where staff particularly felt that we weren't getting their priorities out there in the city council's priorities, like where they weren't really meeting well. And, yeah, I mean, if that's something to think on and come back to, that's fine.
Actually, I wonder, if I may just add to that question, I wonder if you actually even really had that, had time to have that kind of discussion in this particular setting in September?
No.
Three hours. Okay, no, so that's, that's, you know, a fundamental question, right?
I will say, as far as looking at council priorities and because of workload has been issued across the organization during this time when I first came in, and so one of the things that I heard from a lot of the staff was there's key positions in each department that's necessary to operate this enterprise. And so staffing was one of the big things that I heard a lot about coming in around this time, and some of which I think that you can actually see in the matrix study that came out, where their matrix is suggesting there is 7.5 positions that's necessary. That's, that's one key area. And the other area, I would say, is really, we spent a lot of time in previous years investing externally. And as Matrix presented to the council last fall, we need to take more of a deeper dive internally and get our systems in order, because there's a lot of, during this time, a lot of the conversation came up with using Excel for everything, and everything's manual. And it's, for the most part, still manual across the city, and we're doing our best to try to pivot from that. But that's, that's another area that I heard during fall of '21.
I'd just like to say, it was funny to actually see your eyes smile at the answer to that question, because like, there's, like, you use a pretty straight face, and so it's funny to see you go, like, laughing your eyes before you actually, because we can't see your face, because you've got the mask on. So, well done. Let's keep the light in here. That was funny.
So with that, I think it would be helpful for us to go back to the 2021, 2022 priorities. And now we're going to do a little bit more of a deeper dive. Before, I gave you all a general overview, but it's important to note that for each of those priorities, there is a specified, sometimes multiple specified goals, strategies tied to those goals, as well as the desired outcome from those strategies. So for folks who are in the room, you should have gotten this packet. The cover page is just the 2020 white council priorities adopted by resolution. It just gives you a general summary, but if you flip the page over, you will see priorities, goals, and strategies.
Yeah, the long form, not the short.
The long form. Yep. Yep.
If you're in the book, it's still in the red back.
Yep. And also, we also have copies of that.
Mayor, may I just clarify on process?
Sure.
I just, I know we've been running long lately. I'm just going to acknowledge that. And I, in order for us to get through all six of these tonight and give them equal deference, how much time do we have for this exercise, would you say, based on other things we're hoping to do tonight? Just so we're all kind of bearing that in mind.
This is the meat of the discussion. So what we're going to do for each of these priority areas is identify whether or not there's any modifications that need to be made, either in terms of, either in terms of the priorities itself, the strategies that are noted, as well as the goals. If you have a topic that you don't have quite time just yet to flush through, or it's a goal that you're not quite sure about, and we don't want to kind of spend a lot of time thinking out loud about what that goal should entail, there's papers up, you can write that goal up there, and your colleagues can work with you to flush out what a potential goal could potentially look like, what the priority could look like, what the goal could look like, and then we can modify. And there are post-its there. So if there are gaps and things that you haven't quite flushed out just yet, please, 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 everyone, use a post-it, stick it up there. And then what we will do is work offline to flush it out a little bit more. We have time to flush out our priorities before we formalize a resolution that the entire council would need to vote on. Did you have any other questions?
No, I was just kind of trying to imagine the timeline.
Sure.
Sorry, Mayor, yeah, just, so, some people, I guess, think faster than I do with the post-it notes, et cetera. It takes me a while to digest material. So I'm hoping that there, in addition to what we're going to do tonight, that, you know, emails and sitting with each other, I think that's maybe what you said, that there would be a chance for me to reflect, for others to reflect on things that didn't get posted, maybe on, you know, and didn't get said. But as you read the material, you think, oh, I want to offer this. So I want to make sure for those that maybe take longer to digest the information that we can.
Yes. Again, this is not the only night that we will use to talk about priorities, but it is, the goal is to use tonight as a way to get the conversation going and to make sure that everyone is working off of the same level of understanding around what the prior priorities were.
So just getting back to the time question, are we, are we seeking to end? So, just getting back to the time question, are we, are we seeking to end around 10 tonight or earlier?
We are seeking to end before 10 if possible.
Okay.
If we were to end at 10 to get to that, that milestone, we, having six things to talk about, that would mean 30 minutes, say.
Thank you, Terry, that's where I was headed. I was just curious if that worked with whatever else we might need to be trying to get to.
The only, as was emailed out, the only thing that we're going to talk about is the individual priorities, and then ask the question whether or not there are any things that we want to consider as new priorities, you all can put those up on the board, and then whether or not, and this is just a question for you all, whether or not there are any budgetary things that you would like for staff to consider as we are working through or identifying any potential new priorities. Okay, all right. And just so you know, there may be some that move a lot faster than others.
So, would one of these foot charts be the budgetary issues we want to consider, and then we park that so that we don't get distracted as we go along and think of them?
Yep, the budgetary, yep, the budgetary issues will be the last agenda item, and so if there are items that you all want to post on the, on the board, feel free to do so, if they come to you before we're able to get to that part of the conversation.
And before we go through these, one through six, can I just give an overview for a minute?
Sure.
So, so I still think these priorities are very relevant, and some, many of the goals are still very relevant, although they need some updating, and clearly, to me, the bulk of the work is in the strategies, updating, tweaking, accommodating, what we, you know, things have changed since we first did this in 2017. The one suggestion at the, at the overview level, and I bring it up because it relates to all six of these, is whether we want to keep COVID as a separate priority at this point in time, or whether we want to take those COVID recovery items, programs, goals, excuse me, goals, that are, that are clearly still very important, at least to me, but to build them into the other areas because to some degree, we're, you know, we're just in a different place with COVID now. So, I, you know, we had five, we added COVID, maybe it's time to take COVID out and work, build it into the others, I'm just going to, before we start talking about COVID.
Can I add on to that?
Specifically, I just want to put that out there.
It specifically says, like, a lot about reopening, and like, we very much have reopened.
No, we might have to close down again, but here we are for now. Let's roll that.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I, I hear what Councilman, Councilmember DeBala says, and it makes, makes some sense. I'm wondering whether it, rather, this becomes what we do with our ARPA money, and whether it's a separate budget, I mean, that we treat ARPA somewhat separately, because much of this COVID response was, was handled by ARPA, if I'm not incorrect there. So, it could be reimagined as a good stewardship of ARPA funds to handle, you know, whatever, just a thought.
And so, picking up off of the conversation that we're, it looks like we're already moving in the direction of addressing the first priority, so just so that everyone is working from the same page, the first goal was reopening city functions using a phased approach, the second goal was ensuring residents have access to emergency assistance they need to recover from the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, the third goal was to support our small businesses and weathering the economic downturn due to the pandemic so that they recover and thrive in the future. And so, I agree with what we've been talking about in terms of whether or not to, to, in essence, revamp the COVID priority. Now, I like, Councilmember Gibson, what you're referring to in terms of the COVID dollars or the ARPA funds, would that be enough to be its own priority, or should that be something that would be covered under a fiscally sustainable government?
I have my lights on, I, I don't know, I defer to the group on that, it, for those that are more familiar with the ARPA funds, you know, in terms of how it's used.
I think it's very, very good budget practice to align our large-scale priorities, as you, as you indicated, with, with, if we can, with this overarching priority, I think it would be a good way for us to frame and think about the purpose of the ARPA funds, and if there is a section maybe of the, sorry, let me look for what it's called again, fiscally sustainable government, that more specifically aligns also with some of the objectives that are particular to our, how we have, are envisioning, have envisaged using ARPA funds, I think it might be nice to also keep that alignment to some degree, it would really help the city staff to align budgeting practices and goals and outcomes and outputs to, to our larger priorities, I think it would be very good practice, if we can, yeah, something to keep in mind.
And one thing that's important to keep in mind with the ARPA funds is that there are Department of Treasury rules and requirements regarding what can be funded, making sure we're meeting the necessary timelines for expenditures, and making sure that we're reporting out in the way in which we're required to report out. The specific projects that are funded under ARPA can and will likely fall under other priorities, so for example, there's direct cash assistance, right, that could fall under livable community for all, there's rec center funds that are ARPA-funded, that is currently covered under community development, library is currently covered under, I believe, livable community for all as well. So, there may be some ways for us to say that we are not going to have a separate COVID-related priority, but that the priority activities that are being funded using ARPA dollars, we want to make sure get incorporated into other goals, and the management of ARPA funds would be an item under the fiscal, fiscally sustainable government.
And you don't really need a goal that says obey the law with, in the ARPA funds.
Correct.
Because you're going to do that anyway.
Councilmember DeBala?
So, so I saw it very similarly, that the pieces that are important moving forward are both the fiscal management of the ARPA dollars, but also the focus, which is essentially an equity focus, thriving, helping residents and businesses to thrive, to recover, and to support community facilities and programs that serve everybody, including those that are most, the ARPA word is vulnerable. So, so I think we can build those in, I think the, the second thing that's important is the lessons learned from COVID and they, you know, about community outreach and who really lives here and what they really need, that can be built in and should be built in into the community engagement section. And the third piece is, I think we do need somewhere, I would like the city manager's opinion, but I think we need somewhere, yep, you should wear a boat tie more often, seriously, I think we need to be, to make it a priority to be prepared, because we don't know what's going to happen next, and we don't want to just pretend this is all gone away, because it hasn't. And so, maybe that, I don't, there's not an operational goal.
Would that fall under engaged, responsive, service-oriented government?
It probably would, so maybe that's where most of this goes, and the rest of it goes under livable community, and then one line about fiscal, because I do, I do agree that while we want to follow, of course, we're going to follow the law, it takes, it takes skills, it takes resources, it takes focus to make sure that that much money is handled well, and that we can explain how we're handling it, not, not just what the programs are and how many people reach, but literally how the dollars are managed. So, I would like to keep that as a priority, even though it amounts to, as Councilwoman Simons said, following the law.
Would that be a priority or a goal?
Excuse me, that would be a goal.
Okay. So, it sounds like, I just want to make sure, you know, in an effort to move the conversation forward, so it sounds like we are in agreement that we don't need a priority specifically related to mitigating the impact of COVID-19 on the community and city operations as a standalone, but what we would want to do is make sure that priority projects that we want to make sure gets, get done, that are funded by ARPA are incorporated in the appropriate places as it relates to other priorities, like livable community for all or community development, that we add a goal perhaps under fiscally sustainable government related to the management of the ARPA dollars, and that we make sure that we continue to have a COVID-minded approach in terms of city operations and preparedness, and that could potentially be something that would fall under five, engaged, responsive, service-oriented government, meaning we're still kind of watching the current state of play that may involve modifying different policies regarding COVID on a more ongoing basis, which is what we're, we're kind of doing right now.
Yeah, Councilmember Small?
Okay. With regard to that and the complexities between trying to move on and deal with what could be impending or repending a pandemic at any given time, I'm curious about whether or not it's possible to do two things. The first one is, as we continue to have a COVID policy related to both employees and people who are being active, I know the city manager did have to talk about that a little bit on the record the other night, if we could maybe put some explicit thing on the front page of the website, you know how like when you open up the website, it always opens up to like the assistance, like maybe there would be some sort of other thing, maybe it doesn't open up on every page, but on that first page about how the process is and continually being updated and whatever else, so it doesn't appear like city management or city councils being unresponsive to that particular issue. And then, the other thing that I was going to say is that related to the ARPA funds, I, I do feel strongly that I appreciate the potential for flexibility for the overall governments to maybe use funds that are ARPA-related and move them from one place to the other as long as they are ARPA-related, but I am concerned about the, I don't know, not the accounting, but the accounting, in that we do have them in a variety of different places, and they do impact some programs and not others and whatever else, and so, having some sort of, maybe, when we go into the budget process, color-coded with regard to the funds on where monies are being spent or something like that, because of the way that the budget is, has been previously unfolded, might be helpful, just because in the accounting of making sure that, not only that the money is being spent, but that the programs are being acknowledged, or that there's not gaps or anything like that, like, I said kind of to people on the side that, you know, we don't want to turn what could be, like, we get the grant bond, which is a bond and a grant, and then we move that $2 million that it needs, people need to know where it's going, like, it's not just like, you know, aha, now we're going to, kind of thing.
Yep, and so, Councilmember Small, I, I hear you, and I think that what we'll need to do when we're flushing out the ARPA funding-related item under the fiscally sustainable government section, that we make it clear that it's not just about being in compliance with the law, but the engaging with the council and staff around obligation and re-obligation of ARPA funds in accordance to the, with the Department of Treasury guidelines, so.
And I, I don't mean to, to, to say or imply that anybody is not necessarily doing that, like, so please don't hear me as saying that, I guess what I am saying is just that if you have a trickle-down effect from a national or federal policy to provide municipal governments with money that is acknowledges the, I don't know, the hardships or that either that government or the people around them face, then, you know, it's reflexive to both have everybody show it off and have everyone know where it's coming from so that everybody can properly assign whatever benefits they're going to assign, you know, up and down the chain.
Yeah, and we actually, the, some of the prior strategies that were used were allocate the COVID-19 relief funds to programs and ensure residents have access to emergency, so we, in the priorities specifically, called out areas in which we wanted those funds to be used. City Manager Fox, did you have a?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If, if council, council's looking to move mitigating COVID-19 from a priority to a goal, the only thing I will recommend there, it's, it's still prevalent, we're still in a pandemic until otherwise, I would just say, council can consider thinking about it from a response to looking at it as recovery and resiliency, because that's, that's where the pendulum that, where we actually are, and that's where governments need to be thinking through this pandemic. It will be another pandemic, it will be something else, call something different, but we, we really need to be talking about not how we responded to it over the last three years, but how we're going to be resilient coming out of it, and how do we recover, and that's kind of where we are.
Councilwoman Simons?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that if we want to keep on track for getting through all six of these tonight, and maybe leave a half hour for some of the other things that you had in mind, then we can probably end this discussion on this one in about 10 minutes.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gibson?
I was on the same page with Councilmember Small, with the ARPA, and I think it's, we had, a couple weeks ago, we had the conversation about the fiscal condition of the city, and it's a lot of follow-up to that, and there are a lot of people that want to know how, are confused about the ARPA, and so when we say goal, it's not numbered here, but in priority three, to build a budget process, continue to build on improvements, I think, and then there's a reference to better current communication tools, we, we need to do a good job, continue to do a good job and improve if we can to tell the story about ARPA and our accountability to it, not just, you know, how we're getting it out, but its impact as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Culture?
I was kind of adding on to what the city manager was just saying, perhaps one of our goals wants, one of our goals that's going to reflect that we are still in some phase of the pandemic should say something about protecting health, since we're moving out of the reopening plan, and, you know, which says it supports long-term financial resiliency and employee well-being, but we still need to make sure that we're reflecting, that we're protecting employee well-being and also the community's well-being, because we are not actually out of the pandemic, and I want to make sure that we're acknowledging that, not just for the employees' well-being, but also for some of our residents that are going to be, that are going to have a hard time with us taking this out of being its own thing and putting underneath of other things, so that we're signaling to them that we are still taking health into concern.
Excellent. Mayor, can I just, I, I just wanted to strongly support, I thought I heard, I'm so sorry for my voice, I thought I heard you saying that you thought you heard consensus on getting rid of priority number one, I feel very strongly that we should maintain priority one for a lot of the reasons that have just been named, and I like what Manager Fox is suggesting about re, maybe reframing this first one, and I also like what Councilmember Small has suggested about perhaps we reframe it and talk about recovery and building for the future, maybe we even lift some of the language from the ARPA, whatever we've put forward to ARPA about how we're managing the funds, it might help us to, to explain how we envisage using some of those funds fiscally as well, because it's not just about fiscal responsibility or responsiveness, as our other priority says, and then, and then when we do. And then, and then when we do, when we look at this whole list of priorities at the end, it makes a lot of sense to me that we would go through and color-code and maybe have that correspond in the budget when the budget gets formulated so that we can clearly articulate where each and every pot of ARPA funding is going and how it matches to our priorities. Does that make sense? It's a little bit of what both were saying, and I don't know if others agree.
So I'm looking at deputy city manager, because I know that we've already done quite a bit of crosswalks that happen in the budget that connects not just the ARPA activities, but other projects that staff are doing to our council goals and priorities. So, the existing ones. So, so that happens. I think that to the point about, and I do want to make sure that we're kind of staying on track here. So I just want to make sure what I'm hearing, because I think we're kind of morphing a little bit. What was discussed previously was not necessarily eliminating certain aspects of what is covered under the first priority, but incorporating those under other priorities. But it sounds like now that there are some that would like to modify what was mitigating the impact of COVID into keeping a standalone COVID priority, but coming up with new goals and strategies and outcomes that relate more to recovery and resilience.
I like, I like that concise statement of what you, the second part of what you just said seems like a consensus that I can get with on the overall because we don't necessarily, because of the uncertainty. So I just like to echo whatever those sentiments are about trying to maintain some balance between having it exist and moving some other things around.
So just, just to restate what I had originally suggested was not to get rid of it, but to take the parts of it and build them in.
Yeah.
Because they're important.
Yeah.
To other places. But there's, then there's still a little piece left, which is the, maybe is the resilience piece. That's not a little piece. There's still a piece left. So if you take the recovery parts and say that's part of regular business now, you take the fiscal part, that's part of regular business now, the equity part, that's part of regular business now. We've learned all that. There is still this focus, this new, this new focus, focus isn't the right word, but let's just go, this new attention to resilience, resiliency to make, to prepare for the next time. So that is a piece that if I, if we took, if we took the things that are important about this still and put them in other categories, then we have one new thing. But I wasn't proposing to get rid of it, I was just proposing to collapse it for lack of a better word.
Okay. So I want to make sure that we're able to keep moving forward. So we're going to put this as a parking lot, right? No. So we're going to, we're going to put this as a parking lot item. And let's continue to talk through the other priorities with an eye for whether or not, and we can kind of go back and decide on what the priorities, whether or not we can easily keep the spirit of what would be a separate priority or if we really do need to formulate what that revised COVID priority would be. Okay. So.
I understand. There is not.
Okay. So livable community for all. So the prior priority included goal one, ensuring that a range of safe, high-quality, affordable, and stable housing options are equitably available in neighborhoods throughout the city. And the strategies were to implement the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, and that was something that you all have been briefed on. And then review staffing levels necessary to implement the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan and examine ways to leverage cross-departmental collaboration among housing and sustainable sustainability staff to meet council housing and sustainability goals. So you all heard HCD talk about how they combined like the energy efficiency grant funds with some of the other dollars to try to make sure that we're building some connections there. The desired outcome was to meet the current and future housing needs of the community to ensure affordable housing options for residents of varying income levels and of all races and ethnicities and improve living conditions for renters. Goal two, under a livable community for all, was to identify the need for and explore the development of programs to address food insecurity in the community. And the strategy was to identify advocates, nonprofits, and community groups that provide food to residents and convene partners such as I-School Consultancy Team at the University of Maryland to explore ways to address food insecurity in the city. And the desired outcome was to identify and explore the feasibility of programs and systems to address ongoing food insecurity in the community. And just as a quick heads up, ARPA funds were used to fund a food insecurity work. The next goal was to identify programming needs in the community, to develop approaches to meet those needs, emphasizing youth, families, seniors, and residents who tend to face barriers in communities such as Black, Indigenous, and people of color, those with unsustainable lower-paying jobs, immigrants, and people with developmental disabilities. The strategies were to utilize the resident survey, staff and committee reports, program attendance, and racial equity, and other evaluative resources to determine where there may be gaps in program offerings and develop programs to close identified gaps. There was also improved equitable access to programming and services using innovative strategies and technologies. I'm not going to read all of that, but explore establishing a pilot community ambassador or navigator system. And we, the city manager kind of mentioned that. That was also something that ARPA dollars was used to support or is being used to support to help address, I'm sorry, assess residents' needs to help develop updated and improved systems to connect residents to services. And the desired outcome was expanded and/or improved programming or partnerships tailored to residents who need them the most or who currently face barriers to access. The next goal was to defend our status as a sanctuary city and maintain our commitment to be in a welcoming and inclusive community for all residents. The strategies was to continue advocacy efforts focused on immigrant rights and needs, including connecting those in need of assistance to appropriate area organizations, explore new ways to share information with and provide services to immigrant and refugee communities through improved community outreach and engagement policies, processes, continue efforts to lobby at state level for legislative supporting and protecting immigrants and refugees. And the desired outcome was remain a welcoming and strong sanctuary city to grow access to programming and information to meet the needs of immigrants and refugees. Now, this one is quite a bit long. And the next goal was to improve transportation planning and outreach to create a safer and more racially equitable community for all residents, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicle occupants. The strategies, explore adopting a Vision Zero initiative, examine potential components such as education outreach policy changes and infrastructure improvements to continue to revise processes for traffic calming and sidewalk requests, advocate for transportation improvement that impacts Tacoma Park residents through regional collaboration and coordinated efforts, including on purple line safety and transit access. And the desired outcome was improved traffic safety resulting in eliminating a series of vehicle, pedestrian, and bike collisions, improve comprehensive transportation planning throughout the city with data-driven approach that takes into consideration impacts throughout the city and racially equitable transportation systems and outcomes. And I just want to remind my colleagues that as part of our legislative priorities, we mentioned and advocated SHA-related matters. And then the last goal for this priority was further the city's racial equity work. The strategies included build on work underway to address race equity issues, including how we organize, institutionalize, and operationalize the racial equity framework, explore possible task force on racial equity, evaluate how the city is processing and responding to requests and complaints so that they are done in an equitable way across the city, continue to provide race equity training to members of the city council, staff, and council-appointed committees, and other residents. And the desired outcome is continued progress towards more racially equitable community and government. And the major projects, initiatives, and ongoing activities that were identified was the public land and open space management plan, finalizing that. And then a, there's language here around a continued implementation of a 2018 cultural plan. So that was, that is the livable community for all. And I know that there's a lot here. I do, in all candor, I feel like we combined a lot of stuff. Under one priority.
I'm just going to get my notepad.
Yes, get your notepad.
But you have a couple of those specific.
Yep. So I see a lot of lights. I'm going to start with Councilmember Gibson, and that'll give Councilmember Small time to put his post-it. No, 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 it's all on you. Oh, okay. Councilmember DeBala?
So my reaction to this, besides, yeah, we packed a lot in here. And, and so a lot of the specific strategies, they need to be updated because they were halfway through some of them, or some of them were even done or relevant, but setting that aside for a minute. The housing section seems really important to me, the whole housing goal. I think that the food goal is addressed through ARPA, so maybe we don't need to call it out. I'd like to focus on, I'd like to, this third goal of emphasizing the needs, the programming needs of all of our residents. I'd like to maybe rephrase that, but I think that's still pretty important. And particularly, I'd like to get the community navigator program up and running. I think I'd like to see it focused more from analyzing the needs to actually doing it. So that's the change I'd make there. Sanctuary City is really important to me. If I'm looking at this very long list of priorities, I'm wondering what we need to do this year, next year, in that category. So it is not because I don't think Sanctuary City is important, it's because I'm wondering if it's relative to everything else kind of toned down a little? This year? Yeah, I don't know. I'm putting it out there as a possibility to make this a little more focused. And the last one, transportation, the last two, transportation planning, I'd like to see that, some of that elevated, expanded, more focus on that. And on race equity, as a standalone, it seems like it fits together with the goal on the need, the programming needs of the community and how to, so I might rephrase it to, you know, how are we focusing all of our, how are we building in equity to our programs and to our projects and to our policies? And part of that is programming needs and part of that is race equity training, et cetera, et cetera. So I might combine those. So I'm going from six goals down to four, or maybe even three, that to try to make this a little more focused. Should I, do I need to sketch that or is everybody following me?
Thank you.
Just in case it stays as an idea, I'll write it down.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So Mayor, so with ideas we put up there, I mean, that's the, every idea, whether it gets discussed or not, or I'm just kind of?
If anything comes to your mind, and maybe we don't have the necessary ability to really flush them out right now. So for example, Councilmember DeBala brought up, okay, how do we want to deal with Sanctuary City and with the right place? Can't figure it out right now, but let's post it. There are a couple of things that I do want to raise. I agree with Councilmember DeBala. I feel like transportation is becoming, and, you know, our infrastructure, it's becoming a much bigger thing than something that can more easily be incorporated under a livable community for all, although it is relevant. But, you know, the things that we have to do as a council around are space planning, we have purple line that's actually moving, I think. We have lots of things that relate to transit-oriented improvements and Vision Zero. So I do now have a post-it for myself around figuring out what's the right way for us to start thinking through matters that relate to transportation.
I was just going to say, add to your list the bicycles.
Yep.
Yeah, I was going to add on to what you're saying, that I think that there's also goals that we have in relation to transportation that makes it a good item on its own. You know, for instance, should we be saying anything about a public transportation focus or an environmental focus for our transportation plan, that our overall goal is to have a more environmentally friendly or a more public transportation friendly or a more pedestrian-friendly framework that is less oriented towards individual cars?
Councilmember Small?
Great. So I just want to, so everybody knows what posts I put up, and they're on the record for the rest of it. Obviously, livable community for all is sort of an issue that I feel is important and/or raison d'etre for the kid, primarily because of what I feel are some distinctions both between wards and also between where we are on specific policies and how they affect different people. I guess I'd start with, I wanted to make sure that we talked about or pushed forward on the official policy for payment in lieu of taxes. That's a really significant thing and not to be taken lightly. It's primarily the way that you induce developers to come and develop things because they know that they can stabilize their situation at a different level than maybe what the intake-outtake of a tax flow is. So it's a big deal, but it's also one of those things where you acknowledge, you're basically acknowledging the fact that you have to play the developer game. And so since we've had some boat nimbyism and whatever else in the town, we need to make sure that we are talking, you know, truthfully about that one as we go forward. By the way, I'm sort of in favor, but I think it's important, you can't pretend like it's not the way developers get down. So that's my opinion. The next one I think is, just so quickly, is the racial equity stuff. I'm thankful that it is also a priority and should probably be acknowledged that we have some pretty high-level staff people and/or electeds in that framework or category, particularly since it's almost Black History Month in a couple of days. The fiscally sustainable government ones, I think we've all talked a little bit about what budget things we have, and we're probably going to go through that. Environmentally sustainable community, I am ready to talk about, and the others I'm ready to talk about. But primarily, if we're going to be discussing transportation, I do think it's important that we acknowledge that transportation is a many-splendored thing around here and that different areas have different priorities with regard to that. It's the bane of my existence that we have foregone traffic calming-type things in Ward Six, specifically since we've had community organizations and we have neighborhood associations that have put in specific requests through at least two council people that didn't end up in the chain of whatever squeaky wheel things we have. And that's a reality. We had stop sign requests and flashy things that I know we voted on and that I know at least it took back. And I know that somewhere in the middle of this, we told some other things. And so as we look at the pedestrian safety transportation nexus, I would hope that we would acknowledge that because when we start talking about corridor traffic, we're talking about different things in Ward Six and in Five in particular than we are in other places. After that, I also wanted to say that the nature of the community liaison thing- After that, I also wanted to say that the nature of the community liaison thing, I think, is inherent in that conversation as well, because there has to be some clear and identifiable way that groups of citizens who have chosen to organize themselves, whether it be geographically or under a common set of circumstances, whether the bike people, or sustainable people, or community vision people, or whoever it may be, so that it's clear, and it's clear that we can make some distinctions between prioritizing what their interests are, and/or routinizing the fact that we're asking in here for neighborhood involvement. And the people in our neighborhood feel like we are not necessarily being, that our actual routinized neighborhood involvement is not necessarily being respected.
One thing that I would say, again, trying to make sure that we're able to, to move forward, no worries. The prior council had moved, I believe Councilmember Kostak, in her, there was a final resolution of transfer, and there was lots of Vision Zero, and we had talked at length around making modifications to, like, for example, petition process that would, to some degree, limit individuals in communities that aren't able to organize themselves enough to be able to petition for a sidewalk, and therefore, you end up with these equity issues, because you have members of the community who have needs for traffic calming and sidewalks, but they don't have the ability to organize themselves, to understand the process enough to be able to, to get them.
Or are organized.
Yep.
And, and respectful of the process.
Yep.
And the process isn't necessarily reflective of the natural process that a citizen would expect.
Yep.
And so, I just wanted to make sure we talked about that.
Yeah. And so, that, just to make sure that we're able to stay focused on what we're trying to do today. If council members believe that we should elevate transportation from a, or transportation-related items, from a goal under a livable community for all, to something that is a standalone, or are we okay with it being, staying under the livable community for all, but we revisit the strategies to make sure that we're addressing, yeah, to make sure that we're addressing the, the points that are being raised around equity and revisiting some of our processes that could kind of help address disparities in traffic calming.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, the last part of what I wanted to say on this particular chunk is about Sanctuary City stuff, and it's sort of related, I hope, to what, what Councilmember DeBala was talking about. And it may not be, but it could be that it's good for the black eye to be the person that says it instead of somebody else. So, here we go. So, as you know, we live in the place where the crossroads are, and so, we got lots of different kinds of people. We also have some noise issues, and, long and short story is, I tried to address some of these noise issues personally. But while I was over there, trying to address these noise issues in historically depressed communities, or institutionally depressed immigrant communities, I heard any number of things, including that I was homosexual, that, that we were full of sin as a city, and that if we, if it was something other than, if it was transgenders, or homosexuals, or women who were making noise, we wouldn't say anything. And so, and since it was sort of a uniform thing, and kind of onslaught that happened to me, I just wanted to make sure that we understand that when we start talking about Sanctuary Cities, and we're talking about the diversity within communities, and the necessities of understanding immigration policies, that we're also talking about making sure that we provide at least some sort of safe place to a certain kind of people who are involved in historically entrenched communities based on race, or society, or language, or religion. Because I was sort of shocked that the whole thing went down that way. So, I just wanted to make sure that we had at least a chance someplace to talk about that, too.
Yeah. So, I think it's important for us to, to that point. I do want to close my thought around transportation, and then we can talk about perhaps revisiting, I think the Sanctuary City place may not be, may be the right place, but could be how we want to rethink our race, race equity.
And/or civic education, any number of things.
Yeah. So, how we want to look at our race equity. Councilmember Seamus is saying we're, we're supposed to be on another topic. So, I do want to just pause really quickly, so that I can make sure that we're, we're reaching some decision points. So, it sounds like folks are, are folks amendable to keeping transportation as part of a livable community for all with modifications. Okay.
Can I ask a...
Sure.
Because I haven't had, I'd like to say a little bit about this, this, this goal. It seems to me that there are like three sectors, sectors, housing, transportation, and potentially programming. Then there are two value sections, racial equity and sanctuary, in my mind. I don't, that, they may not fit together. I mean, I'm thinking that you could, I mean, just that one thought would be to keep the sectors under that livable, and weave in the racial, the immigrant-oriented Sanctuary City stuff where it belongs, other, else places. It's just that it's apples and oranges a little bit, but there's nothing wrong with that either. Transportation, I was saying, we keep it there. It's, it's an important sector, as is housing, and as is programming.
So, so it sounds like, I just wanna, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I, I hear what you're saying. It sounds like livable community for all, if you were to see a, a human, like, what are the basic needs that a person, that a person needs? They need housing, they need food, they need, although, you know, Councilmember DeBala recommended food, I would say food is still a big deal. They need recreation activities, they need to be able to get to work, those kinds of basic necessities that, that need to be covered. And then, racial equity and Sanctuary Cities are city policies that we are responsible for incorporating into our practices and how we govern. So, there are values that we have. So, so I, I hear what you're saying, and so, whether or not race equity and, not saying that they go away, but whether or not they should be incorporated, because even if you look at...
It could be written in the goal, rather, rather than the strategy.
Yep.
You know, as a part of the, the value statement.
Okay.
Mayor, can I add on to Councilmember Gibson's point? I think there, I, I have noted, I, I believe that we have a need for values clarification as a city, which is a parking lot issue, if we could set that aside for a future conversation. I think we could have a whole workshop over values clarification. It was directed to a page where we have some of that laid out, but I think it would be very helpful to make sure that the council has aligned itself on values before we dig into priorities. I'm not sure that we always are. You're talking also about some values issues, and I think there's a lot of assumptions that kind of sit behind all of these, that we may not all be aligned on in terms of where they fall. So, the parking lot. But I, I, I favor the transportation being moved, actually, let me take a step back. I think that we haven't actually totally clarified, or at least I don't have it clear, whether this document is a one-year document statement, or five-year document statement, or a 10-year document statement. And I think that's a very helpful thing to have us all clarified. If this is a short-term document statement, which it seems to be, sort of, although it's very, very broad, then I think that transportation definitely deserves its own prioritization, because we can see right now that the purple line is going to impact our community in an enormous, extraordinary way, and it's happening right as we speak.
And/or it's impacting us, and nobody seems to care that we're trying to say stuff about it, and whatnot.
Right, right.
So, just, just to clarify for everyone, this is a two-year document.
Okay, it is.
It is designed to kind of establish the priorities while a specific council is in term. So, we, we can't do a five-year, because then you would have another council that could petition come in and change, transform it all. But I hear you in terms of transportation. One thing that would be helpful, as people noodle over what would be included in something like that, what would be some of the strategies and goals that we would want to make sure that we are considering? Councilmember Seamus?
Thank you. I just wanted to agree that transportation should be split out, and also point out that our time is up.
Time is up. Yep. But we did, we did, we did cover the biggest one, so I think, I think that's good. All right. So, if folks want to take a...
Oh, I didn't expect you to listen.
Yeah, no worries. If folks want to take a five-minute break, and then we can be back at, let's just, let's make it a seven-minute break, 8:17, so that we can get back to work.
And in the bag, over in the back, is treats. We never did get the table, but we do have the treats, and there's knives and napkins in there, so go for it, whether you're a chocolate, or a lemon, or a whatever you are, it's in there, or a raspberry. Or raspberry.
Right now, glad the door jumped, you know?
All right. We had a little, a little spillage.
Hey, Derek. Missed it.
All right. Awesome. So I do want to just do a quick recap so that we can move on to the next priority. And just as a reminder for members of council, we have the boards, we see lots of posts that are up there for parking lot-related items that we need to flush out a little bit more. Again, we will ultimately, this will not be the first time that we'll have this discussion. We'll try to summarize some of the feedback that we're hearing today to kind of give you everyone a draft to react to. Ultimately, we'll need to pass a resolution adopting the priorities, which would mean that we would have at least another work session potentially to talk about any modifications and things before we ultimately move forward with the resolution. So there'll be lots of opportunities for us to flush out the language more. But the goal for tonight is to, again, make sure that we're all working from the same base-level working knowledge of the priorities and to kind of talk out, think out loud, talk out loud in terms of where we see ourselves going. So in terms of a livable community for all, so just as a reminder, for the first priority around mitigating the impact of COVID-19 and on the community and city operations, we have a parking lot item about whether or not to incorporate certain aspects of COVID, ongoing resilience and recovery activity into other priorities that we're talking about today, or whether we should have a, still keep a separate priority devoted to COVID-related recovering resilience activities. So that is something that we will be able to follow up more offline to kind of discuss. In terms of a livable community for all, what I'm hearing is that housing, it sounds like most folks are still okay with us keeping housing as a, as a goal under this priority. Again, we'll need to flush out and make sure that the strategies are still appropriate, but housing should still be there. Identify the need for and explore the development of programs to address food insecurity in the community. I know that there was a point raised about ARPA funds that are used to address this issue. And I think the question is whether or not we think this is something that is still longstanding and enough for us to want to make sure that we still make that a goal under a livable community for all. I would argue, given the number of nonprofits that are still delivering a lot of food in our community, that it is. But that's definitely something that we can talk more and kind of flush out the strategies there a little bit more as well. We also have other grant programs that we may be able to continue some of those efforts. The programming needs and identifying what those programming needs are, I'm hearing that that is something that we still want to make sure that is a goal under a livable community for all. Again, we'll need to update the strategies there to make sure that they're still relevant, but we want to keep that goal. And so what I've, I also heard was defending our status as a sanctuary city as well as race equity, the race equity-related items we may want to consider as a value category and whether or not we want to keep as a parking lot, whether or not we want to keep those as part of a livable community for all, or if we want to place those somewhere else. Councilmember Hanzak?
I just wanted to clarify, I was not suggesting that that, they should therefore not be goals. I actually think for the moment they should remain as, as separate goals, particularly, actually both of them, actually both of them. Perhaps we want to broaden the definition of sanctuary city in light of the current national context, but I'm going to also put that in the parking lot because it may lead to a lot of discussion.
Okay. And so, so as I understand it, I just want to make sure I'm clear, because I did hear Councilmember Gibson, the, the question is not to, whether or not to get rid of them. I think everyone agrees that there are still goals we want to keep. I think the question at hand is the placement. Do we want to keep them under a livable community for all, or do we want to place them in another section of our priorities?
I also was wondering whether it, it could be, these values be built into the, the priority itself. You know, in other words, all of the strategies underneath would, would somehow, I mean, the values drive the, the sectors.
Something to consider. I will say that the, the race equity, I could see aspects of that being incorporated, but our advocacy in the work that we do as a sanctuary city and that designation is somewhat unique and it, it's a little different, but I could see the race equity work being incorporated.
I just, yeah, felt like immigrant rights was also kind of a value kind of orienting thing.
Okay. So we'll put that as a parking lot. And the other topic, transportation. So it sounds like a number of council members are thinking about elevating that as a priority. And so that is something else that we can, we can, we could talk about a little further down the road. Okay. Did I, Councilmember DeBaul?
Or putting transportation in the community development.
Yeah, I was going to say sort of the same thing, but I'm having a hard time understanding what the difference between two and six is. And so maybe we should look at two and six and try to figure that out and try to also, like, two is really heavy on the number of items under it and six is really light. So maybe we try to come up with a more, easier definition, understand the differences between what we're trying to do in two and what we're trying to do in six and how we can balance everything being so lopsided between two and six.
With that point, would, if folks are amendable, can we skip to six to talk through priority six and then that way we can kind of have the two side by side? So priority six is community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. The goal is, one goal, is to plan and prepare for the development of the city and region while maintaining the special character and economic and racial diversity of Tacoma Park. The strategies include implement the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, specifically provide support for small businesses, especially those impacted by Purple Line construction, increase workforce development programs and assistance, explore options for providing support services, including through direct assistance and partnerships for businesses located outside the areas covered by existing business associations, attract new businesses to Tacoma Park, facilitate the growth of existing businesses, particularly those that help meet workforce development and local ownership goals. And then the desired outcome is implementation of the strategic plan, prepare and plan for development activity and support local businesses and workers. The next goal is redevelop the Tacoma Park Recreation Center. The strategy, develop a shared vision for the recreation center using an evidence-based approach and improve community engagement around the city's recreational needs and the future recreation center. And then the desired outcome is to leverage both public and private stakeholders to accomplish the goals of developing a recreation center that meets the city's needs for recreation services and affordable housing. Now, one thing that I do think is important to keep in mind for this particular priority are the major projects. So it included the library renovation, Tacoma Junction development, Purple Line construction, economic development along New Hampshire Avenue, Washington Advanced's hospital campus, Montgomery College Math and Science Building construction, continue to advocate for renovations at Piney Branch Elementary School and increase public school facilities in the city or nearby, review selected county policies that support city housing equity and sustainability goals as they are proposed.
But it also sounds like transportation could go in there.
Mm-hmm. Transportation could go in there. And if, if we really want it to be a little, a little kind of nitpicky, housing-related strategies that may relate to more or less development.
I was going to say, it depends on if you think the housing that is going to be affordable already exists, or if you think that more housing needs to be built. If it needs to be built, then it belongs in six. If it's housing that's going to be transformed into affordable housing, then it's in two.
Yeah. And for two, we have review staffing levels necessarily, implement the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. But there, there are a lot of aspects of that that are also in six. So like, for example, the pilots, as Councilmember Smalllet mentioned, the pilots are usually a tool that you could use to incentivize development of housing, right? So it is about payment and the taxes. Okay, you develop, you develop a specific type of project and we will agree to provide our relief of city taxes for a specified amount of time, right? To kind of help with the financing aspect of the housing product development. So it could be the case that, for example, to develop a formal policy could fall under, could fall under economic development, but then to preserve the housing we have and to keep people in housing would be, or to keep individuals housed could be under two. And so that would mean that we could move for six, transportation. And to some degree, certain housing items, housing development.
Can, can I throw a wild card in here?
Sure.
That's just something, I haven't figured out where it belongs.
Yeah.
But it's something that is a value that I think we haven't, you know, talked about because it's big picture, and I would welcome thoughts on it, which is, I feel that one of the problems, if you will, I'm going to call it a problem, in Tacoma Park, as a long-term resident, is that because of the rent stabilization policies that we have created, we have created an unusually inequitable situation in a microcosm in the city where there is a big fat amplified missing middle. And it creates an experience of living here for everyone that is not, not exactly normal. And so if we, which we do value, it's absolutely clear that most residents of Tacoma Park value this structure that we have. But I, I, somewhere I feel we should address the missing middle explicitly and somehow build some goals around that in every domain. Maybe it's just a matter of making at least one strategy, if, if people agree with that value, that there is a missing middle. Like, I believe that we are, have a missing middle on housing. We have missing middle opportunities for people to recreate together. If we don't have the right kinds of recreation and scholarships balance, we would have a missing middle in a lot of different spaces. Anyway, I just want to put that out there for people to kind of think about as we structure the, you know, how we, how we begin to build the future and development.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good point. I think for, for, in my mind, for, for some aspects of the missing middle, you know, to Councilmember Gibson's point earlier, you know, working in aspects of equity would mean that regardless of income levels, racial backgrounds and the like, people would have access. But you bring up a good point around rent stabilization and where it belongs. And if I am remembering, there's, it's in two. Specifically partnerships.
First, thank you.
Thank you. Revise sections of the housing code, including sections on rent stabilization. So again, kind of to that point of what aspects from our Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, which we were briefed on, but it's, it's a massive document, which aspects from that plan do we think as a council we want to prioritize addressing so that we can further housing development? And if review of our rent stabilization laws to make sure that, you know, Councilmember Hanzak, to your point, we're not, there are no negative externalities associated with lack of middle housing, which was communicated in our strategic plan, is that, hey, we need housing at all levels because we have this disparity that exists. And so what are some of the priority steps or recommendations that were in that plan that we may want to make sure we incorporate as part of our priorities here? So it could be, again, a rent stabilization, looking at our housing code, our rent stabilization laws, as well as looking at our pilots, and those may be some of the things that we're trying to do to further advance housing creation in the city, which would fall under six.
Mayor, I just wanted to say, I think this is a good subject, how interrelated these things are. The, the rent stabilization, which I, all of us recognize and want to maintain, means that we're, that our tax base is disproportionately felt on residential homeowners. In other words, because we can't, that, that, the, the, the value, the market value of those, those properties is less because the rent has been stabilized. And so it, it puts more pressure on, on homeowners across the economic spectrum, from, from those that are barely getting by, their home, home burden, to those that, that don't need it at all. One of the concerns I have is, is around how, reducing that, that burden. I think the way that's been talked about in terms of economic development has been to encourage more, more retail, to economic development. And that, and what I don't understand myself is, is how much that economic development translates into, to more, a greater tax base and less impact on. So we just get these all interconnected, and I think it, it plays a role in maybe having fewer new opportunities for so-called middle income, however it's defined, is because our tax base is, is impacted by, by our policies with regard to rent stabilization, et cetera.
Yeah. I mean, I think...
We would be making a lot more money from taxes if, you know, if... We, we would be making a lot more money from taxes if, you know, if, if we, if we were to tax our, our rental properties at their market value if they weren't held down. But I'm not, I'm not supporting that at all. I just say it, it does shift the burden towards the homeowner, homeowner, property owners.
So I, I, I think, and I guess this is, uh, a takeaway for, uh, our HCD staff. It might be useful for, uh, as we are having conversations around the budget to, um, make sure that folks understand, uh, the, the value of, um, economic development and diversification of our, um, tax base. Because one of the things that, that, that is important to understand is when you're talking about commercial districts, um, you know, it's about the increasing of, uh, rental housing, or any kind of housing for that matter, um, does increase the assessed value of those properties and thus trickle down into more. Um, also, when you're, when you have more businesses, um, they then are required to pay other types of taxes, um, that go into the city coffers. I love to, um, to, to highlight the Chuck E. Cheese, um, which is our...
Yeah.
I love, it's the best Chuck E. Cheese ever, just so you know. So if anyone has kids and they're looking for Chuck E. Cheese, go to the one in Langley Park. I, I have friends who have little ones and they said that is the best Chuck E. Cheese ever. Um, but, but it, it's an entertainment tax requirement is there, and so Chuck E. Cheese probably pays that. But could you imagine if we had, uh, aspects of a CBD, like places like downtown Silver Spring, where they have movie theaters and multiple movie theaters and playhouses and things like that, that would also warrant those types of, of taxes? So it, it is, it is not, uh, a one size or kind of one shot for everything, but it is important to note that, um, diversifying, um, our tax base through economic development creates a plethora of additional tax revenue streams that the city currently does not have a lot of diversity to support. Um, and again, I'm not an expert in this. I'm looking at Deputy City Manager Grisby, who spent a lot of her, her entire career doing the planning. Um, but, but those are some of the things that are, um, important for folks to, to keep in mind and understand. Um, and so as a result, you may have other municipalities that have larger commercial tax bases, are, that are then able to reduce their residential, single-family homeowner tax amounts while still maintaining, uh, a higher level of taxes for, um, their commercial properties. I don't wanna get into the weeds of that. I think what's important for us to talk about in terms of what we're focusing on here is, Councilmember Gibson, if your question is around, how can we clearly communicate a need to diversify our, uh, tax revenue streams in leveraging economic development as a means to do that? That is something that can be, you know, written up and something that we could have as a prior, as a goal for, um...
Yes, yes, that, that is exactly, exactly what I was proposing.
Oh, I strong, I strongly support that statement too, I think. Um, and one of the things that might be a strategy that could fall under that, and then we could figure out where, where we go, would be, um, you know, trying to, through, for example, through values clarification, but that's a strategy. But a goal could be like, make Tacoma a destination for certain types of business and tourism and entertainment, um, that is based on, and this would be, you know, that values, that might be based on our value, our value added as a city that has all of these great values that in this day and time are really, really prized and really special. We're, uh, you know, a haven of democracy, a sanctuary city, LGBTQ friendly. We are a lot of different things that right now are hard to find across some of the nation. And I think we could use that value to bring people here more clearly and more deliberately. And perhaps it could fall under our fiscal goal, which is moving us away from this one, but maybe we could figure out where, but something like that.
I just wanna add on to everything that you're saying, that I do think you should be more explicit that, like, even though I know you love the Chuck E. Cheese, I didn't put it together that that's what that was talking about, that that was talking about diversifying the types of businesses. What I thought was, you know, oh, I know that there's been some talk about cities taking advantage of like the marijuana tax, for instance, and so that's what I thought about. I didn't think about diversifying the types of business tax that we were receiving. So I think that it would be helpful to more explicitly explain that, so that everybody understands that's where we're going.
Yeah. And I, and I do think that it would be helpful, particularly during our, our budget conversation, for folks to better understand what diversification of, um, our tax base really means. Because again, not, not every revenue stream is created equal. There, there's housing development revenues that could be brought in, there's business-specific revenues that could be brought in. Um, and so diversification of a lot of this could, could diversify our tax revenues in a way that would be beneficial, so we're not overly reliant on single-family homeowner taxes.
I just wanna remember that, uh, last week, uh, our legislative advocate from Indianapolis talked about their, the work statewide in terms of increasing the ability of, of municipalities to, to tax, uh, in different ways, sales tax or other. So that's one of the, one of the things that we, we might wanna look at.
And so that would mean that the diversification of the tax base, we could figure out how, how it all structures, but it could potentially be under fiscal responsible government. And how would it open the doors for us to explore all of these options?
Which is where the pilot should be too, if we're gonna do pilots.
Yeah, we just talked about, yeah, we just talked about pilots from the perspective of, should it fall under six, the community development? If we are lumping together our housing creation, um, priorities? So how are we, because community development is quite light. And so if one of our goals is to increase housing in the city, um, then what are some of the economic development mechanisms that we would have to do that? Um, so then that would mean pilot, looking at rent stabilization laws, those kinds of things. And that would be something that we could move from two into six, which is currently a little bit more focused on, um, generally just implementing the plan, but not, um, the Housing and Economic Strategic Plan, which those two items are included, but not as, as specific as they, they could be.
But doesn't it all, does it also fall under the fiscally sustainable government?
Yeah, I would, I'd argue that it, that we should probably put it in both places, or at least reference the fact that they exist in both places, because, I mean, you are technically, it's not like it's a windfall, comparatively speaking, but there's a pretty significant tax burden that's associated with developing a project. And so if you decide that you're going to take a pilot instead, usually those are specifically, like, you have some sort of MOU or contractual obligation where it has to go towards certain kind of programming or whatever, or exists, and so it fits into the budget in a certain way. And so it's not one of those things that you just sort of cavalierly do because you are foregoing the taxes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yep, for, for a specified amount of time.
Yeah.
Which is the, the program or the pilot is what we have to determine with staff, because we don't have a firm, we haven't revisited our pilot policy to determine those things.
And because of the way our tax base is constructed here versus maybe some other municipalities, we do have one of the places where we have a tax structure where we can actually do those kinds of things, like in, in Prince George County, for example, we can't necessarily do them, whereas here we actually genuinely could.
So what I'm hearing is we could, um, look at some of our housing development-related items and other, uh, items that are in the Housing and Economic Strategic Plan to try to beef up six.
Transportation.
And add transportation.
Yeah, I agree with that. I know I've seen that.
Okay? So, all right, so I think we are...
On time.
On time. All right, so we've covered six.
Back to three.
Now we're going back to three. All right, and these are a little, little self-proclaimed. All right, so, all right, so fiscally sustainable government. So the goal is to explore and advocate at county and state levels for expanded funding flexibilities for municipalities beyond, and Randy discussed to your point, beyond property taxes and continue to advocate for long-term solutions for tax duplication. Continue efforts to more fully address county tax duplication issues and increase our lobbying activities, which we're doing. Um, and then the desired outcome is a more diverse set of revenue sources for the city. The second goal is to explore ways to provide property tax adjustments to residents in need, advocate at county and state levels for changes in property taxes to assist residents in need and work for more equitable property, um, tax assessment system. Um, and so the strategies were to explore city property tax credits, deferrals, and other options for residents in need and advocate for such options at the county level. Continue to examine and advocate for changes to the property assessment process to ensure an equitable approach, promote economic development to increase the tax base consistent with the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. And then the desired outcome is a sustainable and equitable property tax system, um, process and system. The next goal is to continue to build on improvements in the budget process, presentation for budget information and communication to residents. Um, the strategy is to consider in the current budget cycle and in future years, innovative budget processes to identify ways to present, present summary as well as detailed budget information and continue to provide opportunities for resident feedback with an emphasis on equitable, equitable access and outreach. And the desired outcomes is continued work towards greater clarity and transparency in the budget process and increased resident understanding of the city budget. The next goal was to adopt sustainable investment in banking policy and practices. Um, so identifying work with consultants to determine potential next steps in adopting sustainable investment and banking policies and practices, taking into account the concerns raised by the Nuclear Free Committee about truist think and considering required city staff resources and financial costs to implement. Work to, and the desired outcome was work to align the city's banking and investments with the community's social responsibility, um, values. The next goal was to maintain adequate reserves in the various city reserve funds for a long-term fiscal sustainability strategy, similar to having a city policy on the appropriate level unassigned reserves that should be maintained, establish policies for the appropriate level of reserves in the equipment replacement reserves, facilities maintenance reserves and other reserves, as well as consider establishing new reserves where needed for new programming and long-term financial planning. And the desired outcome is fiscal sustainability for key services. So, that's a lot, but I do just wanna go back. So the first goal, um, sounds pretty, pretty on point with what it is that we are trying to convey, um, in terms of making sure that we're continuing to advocate at the county and state levels for expanded funding flexibility for municipalities. You have any concerns about this strategy?
I'm on, I think I'm on two and three.
Okay.
With regard to this one, um, well, no, I'm also on this one. I just wanted to say that when we're, when we start talking about this as a, um, as a fiscal goal, um, that we're talking about any number of things, including having our own police department and/or, uh, there's always sort of noise about services and the provision of services and whether or not the county can provide said services. And, um, I'd just like to say that that's, um, uh, I don't know, I think, I feel like that's something we'll bang about over the course of the council. But, um, but additionally, I would say that it should probably be more explicitly stated what the value proposition is, um, particularly since, um, some of the things in, uh, two and three and four, um, are probably related to that one. And so that there is a very explicit statement of the fact that, um, we are a municipal government that does provide services and, uh, we provide them in, in equal manner based on whatever our goals and whatever else is, um, so that there's not just sort of an undercurrent or presupposition that everything that is spent on is good and/or everything that's spent on things that don't necessarily apply to people whose tax burden is larger than other people's is bad. Um, so I did wanna make sure that we talked about that explicitly. And anecdotally, the last thing I'll say on this, um, is we, uh, we in Ward Six, we were lucky enough that we have both a, a list serve, and then we also have that neighborhood, uh, crazy thing that everybody gets a- access to, and ours happens to be organized with a lot of silver spring, even though it says it's the New Hampshire Gardens neighborhood thing. And it overwhelmingly talks about people who have real complaints about any number of things, about services and/or police responses or anything that comparatively speaking, we do not have. And I just wanted to make sure that we talked about that while we were talking about priorities.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulcher?
Um, I just wanna say that I think that the, the, you know, that we know that when we say it's a priority, that like mostly they're, they're all priorities, but I do think that the ordering of them matters. And so if we think we're getting to the end of, uh, uh...
Process of duplicating.
Yeah, of the process of duplication. Like, I don't want residents to think that we haven't made, that, that, sorry, that you three and the previous council members didn't make a lot of headway there and that there's a whole bunch more money that's on the table there for us, because I think that eventually there's gonna be a lot less there and it's gonna be a lot more trying to attract Chuck E., more Chuck E. Cheese types enterprises, right? Um, in order to have more money for the state. Um, and the same thing, I would, I, I know that we're not done figuring out the, the, um, the COVID, uh, priority as being its own priority, but I would also wanna at least consider, would it stay number one? Uh, because it does sort of imply that it's number one when, when it keeps that number.
Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Gibson?
Um, yeah, to follow up on that, I guess, uh, Councilmember Small, uh, was holding up, uh, i- issues with regard to services that we, we provide as a city and, 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 and what the county provides. Some of that, if I understand, has to do with the duplic, tax duplication. Another question which, um, might be a, a, a strategy, I guess, is to, uh, well, i- is to look at the services that we provide that are not duplicated. In other words, there's, uh, stormwater services, for example, which are, as far as I know, not duplicated because we, we take, we take our own cut and the, and the city, or the county doesn't take that cut. There are services, uh, uh, recycling, um, and I'm trying to forget, composting. There are services that we provide that could be provided by the county, but maybe not as well, maybe, maybe more expensive. So I just wanna put that in this, kind of the strategy care category, um, under looking at a, a comparison between ourselves and the county.
Okay. So, so... Oh, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember DeMaul.
Yeah, so a couple of things. I agree that, uh, tax duplication as a strategy, you tell me, but I think we're, about as far as we're gonna get in the short term, and maybe it's time to think about other ways of expanded funding flexibility. So I would shift this first one to focus more on some of the legislative and advocacy roles that, that we've talked about, the cannabis and some of the other things. Um, and I might combine it, I'm not sure about that, but I might combine it with this notion that we, um, are looking for a more diverse, the outcome is a more diverse set of revenue sources. So on this first one, I would say, um, going back to the presentation on fiscal health. So we, we wanna look at, um, alternative revenue sources. So let's pick off two or three, um, and look at them and keep both the advocacy going on some of these things that we're not allowed to do yet. So that would be how I'd do the first one, and I have specific ideas about which alternative sources we should look at first. But as far as a goal goes, I would, I would transform that first goal into getting a more diverse set of revenue sources and then add some things in there. Um, on the second one, that's really focused on property taxes for residents in need. We've talked also about property tax, the structure of the system generally. Um, and so I don't know whether we, um, want to add to this vacant housing, um, properties, commercial property tax... want to add to this vacant housing, properties, commercial property taxes, some of the other twists to property tax adjustments or whether they should go under revenue sources and keep this one really focused on helping people who need the help. I think I like that better, but that's the choice. Then on the third one, I see that as really focused on communication to residents at this point. So we've got three things in there, but I really see the third one communicating budget to residents as the key piece there. The fourth one, of course, I think is important, sustainable banking policy. The fifth one, reserves, I don't know if it's reserves, that's the question, or if the question is exploring some of the expenditures that the city has. So if we go back again to this three-part fiscal health. You can raise taxes and help those who need the help. You can increase revenue sources. You can explore expenditures, cutting expenditures. So again, pick off a couple, three, let's see what it looks like. What, please don't take these as anything more than examples. What if we ask the county, how much would it cost to switch recycling over? What if, and cost it out, not just how much would we save, but would they pick up the staff? Would we have to pay them a fee? Would we have residents paying higher solid waste fees? What would that look like, pros and cons? What would it look like if we had four or less police and didn't get the hard lobbied for tax duplication revenue that comes with them, but we have four or less police on the books? Again, hypothetical examples, I actually don't support either of those based on what I know about right now. But I, we've been asked over and over to look at those things. So let's get started. So I would say that maybe it's not reserves that we need to focus on right now. In the next two years, it's expenses. So that's a thought. And then my last thought, please bear with me, is I think it's really important to make as a priority because we are in this once-in-a-lifetime federal funding opportunity zone. Zone, not physical zone. That we make as a priority, that we're pursuing that and that we have somehow got that between the council and the staffs, the resources available to actually do that. Knowing that that's hard. So I just want to put those out there. Those are my suggestions. It's a lot at once, but those are my suggestions through this section.
I'd just like to say, I stopped talking because I didn't know we were going to go through all of them. So if I, I'd like to have the floor back and finish my, all of my suggestions due if we're going to do that now.
Oh, okay. I just figured I'd get it all over with.
No, that makes sense to me, but, but I just didn't want anybody to jump my place that I thought.
Jump your place.
Okay, so.
I can write this down.
Oh, no worries. So I do want to pick up a little bit on kind of what you, what you communicated. So just because we don't explicitly call something out to be a council priority doesn't mean that we're not working on it. So I think that's something that's important to note. Although tax duplication, we've won, kinda.
Yeah, that's what I feel like.
There's, there, yeah, no, we're all kind of like, oh, I'm, I'm not, I'm not 100% convinced. Because I mean, just the, the feeling I get is one, one random zero missing and it's all for naught. But I think that that is something that we don't necessarily have to have as a strategy for addressing our, our expanded funding flexibility. And we can rewrite this around funding, but can make, we could get rid of that. I would be open to that. And Councilmember DeBala, to your point, under that new umbrella of exploring new revenue streams. It could also be prioritizing grants, federal grant opportunities and other resources that may be available through like the infrastructure bill and the like, because there's all of these funding sources that are out there now that we want to encourage staff to.
And there's not going to be earmarks from law.
Yeah, we want to encourage council, we want to encourage staff to, to look at those in addition to other. And I agree with your point around moving the promote economic development to increase the tax base up to those other revenue streams idea. And so then that would also include things like vacant property taxes, basically some of those ideas that were posed in the Housing Economic Strategic Plan around ways that we can, we can kind of diversify our revenues. One point around the scenarios, right? And, and I guess this is a question for City Manager Fox. I, I like the idea that Councilmember DeBala raised around working through some of these scenarios around the interplay of our reimbursements from the county for certain services versus handing them over. But I do think that that's also something that would be helpful for the purpose of, to some degree, our balancing act and some of that community engagement pieces as well, like to kind of help, not just the council to understand, but to help residents to understand. Like there, there's no magic bullet. Like if you, you, you give something up, like you may gain something, but you may lose something and you've got to be willing to pay the cost. And so I, I think it might be helpful for us to start thinking about those scenarios, not necessarily as it relates to the reserves, but perhaps as we are talking about building improvements in the budget and the presentation of the budget and how we are actually working through scenarios for the budget.
Yeah, I meant it instead of the reserves. I'm not sure the reserves is on the list for the next year.
And so the reserves, that, that's a separate question. So we had established a policy, but it was for the general reserves. We, we did not establish a, unless I'm blanking, which is very possible because it is late. I don't recall us establishing reserve policies for the equipment replacement reserves, facility maintenance reserves, those other reserve balance. I don't, I don't recall. I think we established that 17%, right? For the general fund reserves, but we didn't touch the other ones.
I thought there were policies already in place.
Madam Mayor, you, you're correct. I wouldn't say 2017, 18 is when, when it was established and that's best practice from GFOA. And typically you would establish that in your operating budget and you wouldn't do it in your other reserves.
And so one thing that would be helpful to hear from, from staff about is, you know, the value of us establishing from a council perspective, because I know like the equipment replacement reserve. Well, you know what? I take that back. We probably do need to have that discussion because the equipment replacement reserve is often a place that people want to treat as a cash cow. So.
Yeah, that's why I want to go back to my thing.
Hold on one second. So it would be helpful for us to get a little bit of information regarding, you know, the, the policies and the, the benefit of us establishing from a council, from the position of the council, those floors in terms of funding levels for those different reserve buckets. Because I know that we focused a lot on the general reserve fund amount that set establishing that minimum contribution. But we didn't include the other reserves. Councilmember Small?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. That's just a joke. So if we're, if we're done with what I said about one, I'd like to go to the rest of these with regard to the larger issue that I think, like if we're talking tax adjustments, property taxes, tax valuations, skipping the banking policy and reserves. All go with continued on improvements in the budget process, presentation of budget information and communication of residents. So I guess maybe you could think about what I'm saying as specific to that one. If you don't want it to be specific to all of these, but I'm going to argue that it's probably relevant to all of them. In short, I'd, I'd like to say that I think that we, if we don't already know, there is a, at least one person on council has an alternate philosophy on budget and budgetary presentation. Based on the fact that we have a fairly finite set of budgetary numbers that come in every year. And that we are not necessarily in control of what they are, but they do come from someone else. Insofar as we would try to do anything on advocating for any of the changes about the way that calculation occurs or anything else. The positive and negative impacts on the, the budget are a part of things. And there are some, there are definitely some issues with regard to the way that's calculated based on future value for some people because they have no interest or inclination to take out any equity in their homes with regard to property. So it is, it could be a slightly more calculated issue. But it would take advocacy that would be required at either this level or among the staff to work on that. So I don't want to, I, I, I hope we don't go too far down the road of trying to talk about those things as some sort of panacea for saving, or saving grace for people. And I also would note that one of the things, from having lived here for a long time and having both been an apartment and a homeowner is, is that the tax burden associated with living in an apartment owner is two, and surprisingly so. Because when you start doing your taxes, also you're like, holy crap, I got to pay for things that I don't have to pay for if I live other places. And so it's not like the burden isn't equally shared to some degree, and I want to be explicit about that. With regard to the next parts about the budget process, presentation of budget, the reserves and everything else. I do think it is possible to make finite what the expectations of any given department are with regard to capital expenditures for any given year. And so you can put those things in any given budget or an expectation of what those are. If we have a fund that is explicit with regard to that, like with the thing about funds and the way that they are calculated in here. It seems to me that you would have them segregated so you could have some sort of independent investment going on at the bank. So you're getting maybe another point or two on interest on these things. And if we're not doing that, then I don't understand what the value in organizing the budget with regard to them in this way is. I also think that if we're talking about reserves and operating funds and those kinds of things, it is really important to not, to mistake that as what I do think it can be as a red herring with regard to the fiscal health or financial health of the town, particularly since the money comes in in hard money chunks every year. And so with regard to the way that we're talking about these things, I would just like to say, I expect that it's at least possible that all of these are going to be places where I am at least potentially a sticky wicket, if not an advocate for substantive changes. So.
So thank you, Councilmember Small, and it sounds like the reserves is something that we should continue to consider as a priority. Okay, so just time check for the group. It is 9:12 and I have promised you all that we are going to try to get out of here by 10 o'clock. So I want to remind everyone that we have lots of post-its. Everyone should have post-its around the table. If there are things that we are not able to cover that you want to make sure that we are, you can keep on our shortlist, please write it on a post-it and stick it up there. We have two more priorities that we need to get through. We are going to do environmentally sustainable community. The other one is engaged responsive service-oriented government. Four and five. Well, we're really trying to stick to 45 minutes. All right, all right. So environmentally sustainable community, first goal, climate change mitigation. Work towards net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2035. That is our sustainability framework goal. Strategies prioritize, accelerate priorities and programs that implement the 2020 Climate Energy Response Framework Strategies for Buildings, Transportation, Renewable Energy, Post-Fuel-Free Community. Continue and expand sustainability programs with emphasis on equity issues. Coordinate and advocate for climate change mitigation resiliency and sustainability with county, state, region, and federal governments. Integrate city climate goals and strategies with other city policies and programs. And then the desired outcome is progress towards cities' climate mitigation and resiliency goals. The next goal is climate change resilience. Improve our ability to adapt and be resilient to climate change. Strategies include consider ways to address increased stormwater in the city and its impacts, including incentives, stormwater presenting, permitting, and green infrastructure. Explore ways to address and mitigate stormwater impacts on private property and implement new stormwater management fee structure. And then improve stormwater management for both public space and stormwater flows on and between private properties. The third was manage our community natural resources sustainably. Protect, maintain, and improve the health of our urban forests, natural resources, and water quality with an emphasis on equity. Okay, and then the strategies were to incorporate the overarching goals and priorities of no net loss, increase biodiversity and equity adopted in the 2020, adopted in 2020 in the city's urban forest management program. Adopt the multi-year urban forest management plan, begin a pilot project for collaborating planting of trees in select neighborhoods. And the outcome, no net loss of urban forest canopy citywide, more equitably distributed tree canopy over time, increase biodiversity and improve maintenance of mature trees citywide. So a couple of things that's important for everyone to just recall is the number of activities that we've had. Enforcement, education, and outreach related to city codes such as recycling, plastic bag bans, snow clearing, cooperation with county and state where applicable. We move forward the Climate Action Framework Strategy Development and Implementation. We have the city sustainability programs and initiatives. We've implemented additional Sustainable Maryland Certified Goals, implemented the Urban Forest Program and revised our tree ordinance provisions. And then we, and then there was also the Green Stormwater Management Projects to meet state and federal mandates for 2025. So there's a couple of things that I did just want to make sure that, I know that there's been a lot of work on some of these, but there's still more work to be done. So for example, we've done a lot with tree plantings. Again, it's something we, we're still going to probably have on the list, but just a question about whether or not we need to do it. And then there's also lots of work that's happening underway around stormwater management on private property. Again, there's a lot more that needs to be done, but those are some areas that we, we have had quite a bit of progress. So Councilmember DeBala, if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you. I think that this section, the, the projects and activities plus some of the strategy need to be updated. Like we don't need to begin a pilot project because we have it. We might want to think about expanding it or continuing some other verb. So there's a number of, of updates, but as far as the, the four goals, I think they, goals, three goals, three goals look good. I would raise equity a little higher here. So in climate change mitigation, I think we should not bury it as one of the bullets. I think we should say, work towards net zero greenhouse gas emissions with a focus on equity. It's bullet two, but I think it should be raised. It's already in the second one. It's already in the third one, and it should be in the second one. So that, that's the one thing I would say. And the other thing is it says integrate the climate goals with other city policies and programs. Yes, and that should also be true in reverse, and maybe that should be elevated because that's important. Because one way to get to your climate goals is to do housing work. And one way to get to your transportation goals is to do climate work, et cetera, et cetera. So maybe we think about making that an actual goal. No? Yes? I see people, comments.
I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to say this, but.
I just asked you.
I've been sitting here all evening thinking many of our projects hit multiple goals.
Yeah, so I'd like to acknowledge and continue.
I'd just like to say in response to what Cindy said, that the only, rather than quibble about all of these, I'd just like to say something about two of them. And that's stormwater and trees. And so I just, the issues and prioritization of stormwater is important. But I would bet you a dollar that not everybody knows why. And that the overall desires of, of certain people to, to promote stormwater versus the understanding so that people appreciate what it means to not have stormwater concern needs to be a component part of this environmentally sustainable community part. I've had some general discussions with a variety of people about the fact that we don't necessarily do a good a job about the educational components of this because of the technocratic nature. the technocratic nature of a lot of these things. And we have people who are, used to be really active hippies or environmentalists or whatever else who now are property owners, and that, it means something in the context of how this all goes down. And so keeping in mind that as a contextual framework, I think is important. I think with regard to the tree policy, I just wanted to say that overall, we are still lacking to some degree in our ability to address the realities of trees and how they are impacting different neighborhoods. Specifically, we just had another tree fall on a house that I would just say probably that a lot of people didn't necessarily want this particular house to have the tree fall on it. And part of it is directly related to the fact that there are root ball issues on every single oak tree that's in Ward Six because of the proximity to the houses and their proximity to each other. So every time we talk about preserving our urban forests, we're actually putting real actual lives in danger because pre-existing policies about what was important for a tree have undue impacts on other sorts of people. It may not be the case in other wards, but it's been, that's what, the fourth tree on that particular street on that side of the block that has fallen down? That's not a game, and that's serious, and it's a big issue in Ward Six. And I do not want for this policy to fail to take into consideration the fact that not everybody is similarly situated with regard to the costs on these issues, but the exigent circumstances facing some people are far more dangerous than they are for others.
So I, can I say something?
Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, thank you. So I think that as far as the policies, we may have adjusted them. As far as the education, I think we're woefully lacking. And I had the same, a similar note about the climate programs, but I had it over in the number five. I think, I think it's really important to explain things in terms that a variety of residents understand, and I don't think we do a good job at it.
I would say it's also really important to recognize that there are people who can even care about the environment that have a fundamentally different issue or concern about the concept of the urban forest and what it would mean.
Oh, yeah.
And also that some of the things and policies and decisions we've already undertaken about stormwater may or may not be caked in, I don't know, mistakes or caked in policy misses or misses or structural misses that we probably need to address or at least acknowledge without just sort of continuing along the road of awesomeness of sustainability, particularly since all of these things relate to how they translate to other people. And it's actually the one issue that actually affects every single person on the actual planet. And so to feel a sense of alienation about perspectives or situations is a flawed concept and should be eradicated completely. And I'm not going to stop saying anything about that.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I support Councilmember DeBala in terms of her overall perspective on the three, the three goals and the possible need to have a fourth goal around integrating those policies across, cross-departmental. And I think it probably might very well work if they're integrated around education as well, because I think that's clearly needed at, at a lot of, at all different levels and, and different populations have different needs and have different perspectives, and we need to speak to that. We don't have a, I don't think we have a robust education program here. We have no, very, very little incentivization. So I would actually add the word, maybe I'd need to put up there, to incentivize residents to, to do the right thing in terms of, of number, goal number three, which is to, to value and, well, I put value and manage our community's natural resources. And that's, I think we could, our, our community, one of the main things why this is a, a place where people want to live is because of our natural environment. And I think we can do, what this seems, this, this particular priority seems to go, I certainly want to encourage that we continue to do it and do, and do it better.
Councilmember Honsak?
I, sorry. I would like to propose an adjustment to the second goal. I think it should say something more like climate change resilience and adaptation. We are already living through climate change induced issues. It has a lot to do with equity. And I think it should include, I guess this is a little bit what you were referencing, but that for some reason the strategies are exclusively focused on stormwater, that probably, that's absolutely critical. But I would make sure that in here, unless I'm missing, where else it fits in, we add in something related to emergency preparedness related to climate. And that would include things like, and I, and I don't have the language for this ready. I can, I can work on it and bake it up, but something related to heating and cooling, exacerbating, you know, temperatures that are going to be going to extremes more frequently, and what are we doing about that as a city? And I, and it would also get to, it would get to issues related to making sure that we're cool, and not, the language is not on the tip of my tongue, that we are not creating-
Heat islands?
Yes, thank you. Heat islands, I was looking for that word, island. Heat islands throughout the city and that we're looking for different ways to, to explore, maybe that would be a strategy. Anyway, we can come up some language around that, but, and there, there may be some other issues I'm not, that are not top of mind, too. I just know that we need to work a little bit harder on that.
Okay. Councilmember Gibson?
Just want to add, one piece, I talked about, well, several of us had mentioned about education. The natural environment provides, has, has the, has the potential of providing career tracks to people. So I think connecting it to recreational programming is, is another, another, perhaps as a strategy that, that would fall under here because we, 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 it's a great, not only is it good for kids to get out and under the trees and, and in a cooling area, but there's also career potential there.
Okay. So one other thing that I would like to just highlight, and I don't know if this, I'm assuming this is not unique to Ward Six, but we're talking about education as it pertains to climate change and climate mitigation, but I do think it's important, too, for us to educate residents around things that are far more basic, like litter, like recycling, and making sure that we're doing it in a culturally appropriate way. I, I say a lot of times, sometimes our, you know, not everyone grew up in the eighties and the nineties, give a hoot, don't pollute in America, so they don't necessarily know. And so there's a noticeable difference in terms of litter in certain parts of our community versus others. And so making sure that we're, we're doing a lot of this education, that we're not just limiting it to stormwater management, which is really more directed towards single-family homeowners, but we're also thinking about other aspects of, of climate, energy efficiency, litter, and we're doing it in a way that is culturally appropriate.
And I'd just like to say with regard to that also, and, and I don't know the answer to this, and I'm sure it comes up later, with regard to the community groups there that work with the council, but some of this, in my understanding, is the responsibility of a green team generally with regard to policy. And so we need to make sure that they are actually doing whatever it is that they are supposed to be doing, if we're going to keep our designations anyway. So I'd just like to say that.
Thank you. Councilmember Honsak?
I actually didn't mean to leave it on, but I was just thinking, I wonder too whether, and again, it's another wild card, I'm just throwing this out there, whether this one ought to have something related to the healthy people, healthy environment nexus. Sorry, but that happens to be my professional area, and I, I do think of it that way. I mean, I'm also thinking, you know, we're talking about trash and recycling and all that's really important, but we, we really, it's really important to me that we're all thinking, wow, in the next five to 10 years, we are going to see some serious stuff going down. We've just seen a pandemic. This is the kind of stuff I wrote, I write about for a living for, like, why did the pandemic happen? You could argue all day, but we may very well see more of this kind of absurdity, this crazy anomalous situations. Are we prepared also for some of the mental health issues that kind of come along with that kind of stuff? And some, and we're not. And some of the, uh, the health systems stuff that involves the city. Again, maybe, maybe we're finding that somewhere in here, but maybe, again, parking lot issues, but are we ready for the next possible pandemic? Do we need to put some longer-term things in place as a city in addition to some of the operational emergency preparedness stuff, like extra vehicles for our, you know, snow shovels or the ability to leverage from other cities, all of that kind of stuff? Anyway.
It's not romantic at all. I think that that's important. I just wanted to say that that nexus is-
Yeah. And I, I think that relates to the parking lot item around, do we keep our resiliency, recovery and resiliency COVID-related item, which would highlight some of those public health matters? Or do we try to weave certain, some of those aspects into other, other priorities?
I would just, just note that the, it's sort of what we're, what you talked about, Cara, is, is, is in a sense, that's what, another factor of livable communities is. A livable community is a place where, where, you know, where you can cool off and where you can relax and, and, and be healthy. So there, there might be a cross, crosswalk in, under livable communities.
And maybe even, the last thing I'd say about that is, we'd sort of talked about built environment issues before, and we may want to put some placeholder or some kind of thing about built environment with regard to sustainability things, because just, you know, the issue that we have with having Sligo near us, you know, in the rain, we go see if the bridge at New Hampshire is washed out, even with the changes that they made to it. You know, and that's going to be real and probably more often, since there are some built environment issues that I think we should probably put on this.
I just want to agree with that entirely, and, and we've talked about climate change, and maybe we need to add to our nomenclature, climate change and, and somewhat environmental degradation because of development and how big, how much, how much of the land do we cover with, with infallible surfaces?
I agree. It's all the same. I, I agree.
So I want to be mindful of my pledge to you all to try to get us out by ten o'clock. So it is nine thirty-three, and we have one more priority to get through.
I'm just super impressed that that didn't get really acrimonious, actually, or that stuff.
Again, I want to, I have my stack of Post-its. I want to encourage folks to use your Post-its, to jot down any ideas that you have that we need to think through. So let's talk about engaged responsive service oriented government. So the first goal was to hire and onboard a new city manager. Done. So, and let's go to the next one. Goal, improve community, improve city communications with residents and adopt innovative culturally appropriate initiatives to improve public engagement and collaboration with residents, particularly with residents who may face barriers to participating in municipal government activities and community affairs. Okay, so the strategies for this one?
This is where some of what we just were talking about could fit in, could be applied. But go ahead.
Improve the city's current communications tool, including the city website and social media tools to increase public engagement and more easily and effectively share information. Review lessons learned from recent community engagement efforts and investigate new ways to enhance and put in place new initiatives to improve public input, engagement and collaboration. Investigate ways to improve accessibility of community meetings, especially for residents whose dominant language is not English, those who are deaf and others who may face barriers to engagement with the city government. And the desired outcome was facilitate and enhance improvement, trust and collaboration among residents and city government. The next goal was improve policies and processes to enhance resident interaction with the city government, including requests for government services, complaint systems and code enforcement. Review process for traffic calming, sidewalk requests, repair and maintenance, residential commercial boundary conflicts over noise, light, et cetera, the impact of utility work on neighborhoods, and review the neighborhood services citation procedures. Review recommendations from the Complete Safe Streets Committee and implement appropriate improvements. Update sign ordinance and other city ordinances needed. And then the desired outcome, improve and more equitable policies and processes related to city services, such as traffic calming, sidewalk requests, maintenance and repair and other city services. The next goal, put in place improvements and review all overall structure and purpose of existing council-appointed committees. Continue to evaluate and put in place ways to improve appointment processes and establish a common committee structure to increase efficiency and effectiveness. Attract new members so that the committees more closely reflect the diversity of the community and explore innovative methods to engage and collaborate with residents who may face barriers to participating. The desired outcome, enabling diverse, engaged, productive and rewarding resident involvement in, in collaboration with city government. The next goal, review and reform the city's approach to public safety to ensure racial justice and work towards a safer, more livable community for all residents. Review, explore and put into place appropriate changes recommended by the reimagining public sa, public safety task force. Desired outcome, more equitable and just approach to public safety that meets the needs of residents. The next goal, improve service delivery and reduce administrative burden by updating internal policies, IT infrastructure and software. Assess resources required to update the city's systems. Support the purchase of tools to facilitate cross-departmental collaboration. Desired outcome, reduction in the time spent on manual inefficient processes to improve service delivery and allow staff to find greater bandwidth to innovate towards the, towards and advance council priorities. And some of the major projects included redistricting, elections and council compensation. So there are a few here that we have, that we have done, that, you know, and there are some that we, we still have a little bit of work to do, but the question is whether or not it warrants keeping as a goal. So for example, the council-appointed committees. Quite a few of the strategy that are employed there, you'll learn more about this on Wednesday, but we, we have streamlined quite a bit of the process. There are some code modifications that we need to make, but we did undertake a pretty huge overhaul of our committee process. So it may not be a priority that we want to, or goal that we want to keep here. The other item is, there are some aspects of, and we talked a little bit about, you know, traffic calming and applying equity there, so this may be one that we want to keep because not all aspects of, of those items have been fully addressed. I would argue that we still want to keep the public safety aspects of things. I know we're going to be talking more about them a little later in the year and kind of where we are with updating a number, the status on the number of the recommendations that were made. But I do want to ask you all if there are things that you all from a engaging the community that we want to see happen that's not covered here. Councilmember Culture?
I was just looking at the engaging community piece, and I know that we've all talked about that we're all really interested in speaking to people through non-traditional or non-electronic, I think is sort of what we're all using right now. But also, you know, is there a piece in here about our responsibility to our constituents to teach them how to use, you know, some of those things so that they're not only connecting with their municipal government, but also the other levels of government? And, you know, maybe the, some of the individuals receiving ARPA assistance, for example, that didn't even have email addresses and that that was an impediment, that would be a really good group to start with for an education piece.
I don't know, I, I just wanted to say, I actually think all of these are probably reasonable to stay in some form, even if we- reasonable to stay in some form, even if we change the language about them. Like, the, for example, the public safety stuff, like, we should say something about continue to advance public safety, in particular since that is a real issue, an omnipresent issue, everyday issue for some of us. But I also wanted to say that if there is a pre-existing thing about the request for services and traffic calming thing, it needs to be fully, like, not only what, like, the legislative concern is, but whatever the procedural or policy options that are internal to the organization, I'd like to see that explicitly as a part of whatever we continue to do on this, because of the fact that, I'm going to be rabid about the fact that there's at least some kind of a nexus where pre-existing organizations that thought that their democratic processes were going to be respected as a part of this whole thing were not. And I, at some point, I'm going to come back in with a video to give to them about places where there's exceeding amounts of traffic calming that I find absurd and whatnot, and is going to be unpleasant potentially if it's taken personally, but it's going to happen.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I think I agree that these, almost all of these belong here. I can't speak to the, what you have mentioned, Mayor, in terms of the work done on existing council-appointed committees. But the goal above it in terms of enhancing resident interaction with city government, now, what, two and a half months in, I still think there's an unattended-to need which has to do with constituency support, constituency education, and the relationship between the council and the city government and the city manager in terms of getting the proper orientation and ongoing support that makes for us to help each other to do our job. So, it's somewhat of a, you know, we have, we work together to reach our constituents, but frankly, those on the, new on the council are still learning what tools are available. There should be an orientation, there should be a handbook, and there should be, you know, some real clear-cut how-tos that help us not only get started onboarding, but continuing source, resource for amplifying what staff does and what we do together. So, I think that might, whether that's a separate goal, it certainly is several strategies within this, in terms of enhancing resident interaction.
So, I'm seeing more constituent services, resident interaction, basically, council, staff.
May I specifically suggest and see what you think?
Sure.
Because that's actually my only input for this. Is, I concur with everyone that I actually also agree most of these should stay, pretty much more or less how they are with some mild tweaking. I would suggest under goal two, under the set of strategies, that we add a strategy there that is explicit about the role of the council. We could work on the language, but it could say something like, support, empower, and enable the council to serve as trusted voices that serve to amplify the messages of the city, and something, something, something else that talks about bringing in the voices of residents and bringing them back to city.
Both ways.
Yeah, both directions. But I think, Councilmember Gibson and I have talked about actually coming up with some resolutions even around that, that we could explore on a future agenda item to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
That language would be helpful. If you have it on a post-it. All right. So, are there any other comments?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember DeBala?
Thank you. First one, agree, don't need it, but it does raise, in conjunction with number two, raises the question of whether we should say that all staff should be responsive to residents as a primary goal. Maybe that's already assumed, but maybe it isn't. So, that's one question. The idea that, expanding on number two, because there's so many things there, there's only a couple of strategies listed, and there's so much, so much we have learned through COVID that we can put into practice. So, I'd like to work on that a little bit. And I don't want to lose Community Navigators, it's not in here, and it seems like either a, it seems like both a goal and a strategy. Outreach to the community, specific outreach to specific communities, two-way outreach to specific communities, target communities that don't get, I mean, it's a package that I think would address a lot of the concerns people have raised. I think we do need to enhance resident interaction, I think that this traffic, sidewalk, et cetera, calming thing is one example. So, I'm not sure how that works out with editing, but I think that's, there's more to it than just what we suggested in the policy on safe streets. So, all of which is to say, I think this section could be beefed up and given a lot more attention. I agree, keep the public safety task force. The one thing I want to remind people, we'll talk more Wednesday night, but having done an overview of the council-appointed committees, the council needs to do their end of the bargain every year with the committees, or there's not a point in having committees.
To implement, is what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, that's not a goal, that's just a thought that we need to back, it's a fact.
Well, may I add, is it not a strategy in terms of, you know, you capture the conclusion of a board's recommendations and then take it to the next step?
I mean, it could be. The question then becomes, is it, is it a priority enough for us to keep it in in terms of this particular document?
Or is it just regular?
Or it's just regular business? Like, this is something that needs to be worked into future agendas, where we can make a decision around, how do we want to organize ourselves as a council to support individual committees? How do we want to form subcommittees that will ultimately be able to review applicants, applications for committee participation? Basically, how do we want to make sure that we're addressing some of the lessons learned from the council process that Councilmember DeBala and I had worked on last year, to ensure that we're, there's that feedback loop between council and committees in a way that means that folks aren't wasting their time and is being done in a meaningful way?
And my last point was, before we got off on committees, is this goal of improving internal policies, services, administrative burdens, is absolutely important and still relevant in the support of, and maybe that's where the, any other comments that we may or may not want to make about staff and council roles go, but the idea that the internal policies and structured support, engaged, responsive, service-oriented government, I don't want to lose that, that's really important to me, and I'm glad, and I'm glad y'all are working on it.
Councilmember Honsa?
Oh, I was just going to add that I think, given, I don't know about others, but that there has been a lot of feedback from residents publicly, as well as, I think, to several of us as individual council members, that we have not done an adequate job as a city of integrating the recommendations of the committees, that it would be good to make it explicit, I think, under, wherever it belongs, maybe under four.
Okay.
Yes, it just reminds me, we were talking about staff burnout. I think we burned out some committee members, unfortunately, because they felt that it didn't go anywhere.
And I think one of the things that during our process, we realized that, one, we had committees that didn't necessarily need to be committees.
Yeah. We don't know where it started.
But we'll talk, we'll talk more about that on Wednesday, you all are going to get that history, but we hear you. And so, the biggest thing for us, and part of what our actions will be, is we have a number of, like, the Public Safety, Reimagining Public Safety Task Force, gave us a lot of recommendations. The onus is on the council to figure out the right way to make sure that we're following up with staff, and we're getting those briefs on where we are. You know, the sustainability.
That'd be an example.
Yep, that would be an example. So, there's a number of different committee recommendations and reports that it will be important for the council to take the necessary next steps and to provide that direction to staff to follow up with us regarding the status of those recommendations. Okay, so, we have 10 minutes, so let's talk about next steps really quickly. I'm sorry? Oh, sorry. So, committee on the. All right. So, I know that we've covered quite a lot, and there's post-its all over the place, and people may not be aware of all of the different things that are on the post-its. So, what would be helpful for us as we are combining all of this feedback, and I say us because I'm looking at city staff, y'all will help me, right? As we are combining all of this feedback, if you have specific recommendations or edits to this particular document, I am just asking, we could send out a link, so everybody will have it electronically, but if you, you know, some people work better with electronics, some people don't. But please provide us with any markups or proposed language that you all have on these priorities that are currently existing. If folks can provide any feedback that you have on these priorities by next Monday, that would be great, and it's just a way for us to kind of summarize some of the things that have been discussed today.
If you would really say you are editor.
Just based on what you've discussed, based on the points that folks have raised today, we want to make sure that we are capturing your thoughts around the priorities that are listed here. I'll work with our city manager to make sure that we're able to get all of the notes that are from the post-its, but I think there was a lot that was discussed today, and so it would be really helpful for us in terms of making sure that we're capturing everything, that if you all, your thoughts on these, what we've kind of discussed, and your key takeaways, and the things that you really want to see happen, if you could provide your markups to the city manager and myself by Monday.
By Monday.
COB?
COB is fine.
Yeah, ready.
Yeah. Type up your post-its.
I was just going to take a picture.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, because otherwise you're going to have seven.
Wait a minute, I don't have all my post-its up. Hold on.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I do yet either.
Okay, let me put up my post-its.
And, Mayor, if I, if, things come into our minds that we haven't spoken about, but we want to add, please give me permission to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if you, this document, this document is electronically to us?
Yes.
It has been sent?
It's in the agenda.
It's in the agenda? Then you don't have to send?
What I wondered is, do you want it, I could certainly circulate it as a Word document.
Yes, please.
We could also make it a and/or a Google document, so however you want it, we can do that.
Yes, if, the person who would be responsible for combining and resolving things would prefer a Google doc, but I know that having everyone in the Google doc can handle.
Old school, but I can handle it.
You can handle the Google doc? Okay.
I prefer the Google doc.
I do too. Okay, so I think, I think we, I think we've reached a.
It doesn't format as well, but it works.
Okay, I think we've reached a quorum.
Yeah. Format, don't worry about it.
So, we can discuss that? Yeah, so, it's kind of, it's the council's document. So, what we've done in the past is the mayor kind of gets all of the edits from everyone, and then we start to kind of have some conversations around, well, you said this, and someone else says that, you know, so, and then if we need a work session to just kind of hash out some of the differences collectively, then we can do that, we can schedule work sessions to kind of talk through them. What it sounds like, based on today, is that there's a lot of agreement on certain modifications, but there are some things that are parking lots, and so I'll just plan to, we'll need to schedule a work session, just so that we can kind of talk through things a little bit more.
I'm wondering, at one point, would it make sense for two or three people to take, you know, one or two of the goals and work on them, that have interest in focusing there?
Yeah, I think that is ideal, once we've gotten those first sets of comments, because then what will happen is you'll see which council members are more likely to have feedback. And then, from there, you all can work, again, just wanting to remind everyone of the Open Meetings Act, so we're not kind of doing things behind the scenes, we're really just asking for folks to submit their comments so that they can be compiled, and then from there, we can determine how many council members have comments or thoughts, and how we can kind of formulate, format a future work session on this, on this particular item. So, just want to make sure that everyone is, Councilmember DeBala?
I don't know if you were going to do this, but can I just thank all the city staff, including the three in the room, four in the room, and everybody else online that's probably still hanging in there waiting for us to stop talking? Thank you for hanging in.
Yes, thank you all so much. This has been extremely helpful. Again, just want to remind folks, Jesse will send out a Google document that everyone can put in their comments into that document. Please feel free, if there are things that you didn't have a chance to discuss today and you want to leave a comment, feel free to do so. Also, if things pop up in your mind and you want to add something, please feel free to leave a comment to let us know that that's what you would like to do.
One last thing.
And thank you to BN for your endurance.
The COG stuff.
Yes, we will, I will send those out. All right. I think that is it. Thank you all so much for bearing with us tonight. Again, I want to echo my colleagues and appreciation of city staff that has bared with us tonight. We really appreciate it, and I will see everyone on Wednesday. Thank you.